Good evening and welcome to the 1,187th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plats and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions which are adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Smiley.
Present.
Ms. U.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Right here.
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. President.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Willsaw.
Is here as well. Thank you, and also with us tonight we have Mark Toramina, Jacob Uhazy, and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Departments, and we'll introduce them as appropriate throughout the meeting. The format for this meeting, for anyone who hasn't been to one of our meetings before, is that we'll start with each agenda item, we'll read out the item, and our planning staff will give background information on the item. We'll then ask that the petitioner come forward to speak to the item, answer some questions that we may have, and then we'll have an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the petition to also come forward before we make our decision. So with that, we're going to jump right into the public hearing section of our agenda, and that's going to be item number one.
Which is petition 2021-12-02-27 submitted by Maple Real Estate Group LLC requesting special waiver use approval to a development to develop a planned residential development pursuant to Section 5.02 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance consisting of an apartment complex made up of three buildings and 24 dwelling units on the properties of 9106 and 9120 Middlebelt Road located on the east side of Middlebelt between Joy Road and West Chicago on the southwest quarter of Section 36.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toramina, yes, Mr. Ventura.
I'm going to recuse myself from the proceedings for this item.
Correct, yes. Give Mr. Ventura an opportunity to step down due to a possible conflict of interest. So with that, we'll go to Mr. Toramina for background information on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to develop a planned residential development that would consist of an apartment complex made up of three buildings and 24 dwelling units. This property is on the east side of Middlebelt Road, it's just south of Grandin Avenue. The property is 1.45 acres in size, including 100 feet of frontage on Middlebelt Road. The property, as you can see from this zoning map, is divided into two zoning classifications. The RUF portion, which is located at the rear of the property, is in the process of being changed to the C1 Local Business District. The balance of the property is zone C1, so that would make it all under one zoning classification. Council did give first reading to the rezoning on April 4th of this year. The submitted site plan shows three apartment buildings, each containing eight units for a total of 24 units. Building number one is located towards the front part of the site. Building two would occupy the rear part of the site and includes the small RUF district that is proposed to be rezoned. And then Building Three is located between Buildings Number One and Number Two along the south side of the property. There would be a two-way private street from Middlebelt that would provide access to all three buildings. Parking, as you can see, is distributed throughout the site, available in the front and sides of all three buildings. The plan shows a total of 42 parking spaces. This represents a ratio of 1.75 spaces per unit. All three apartment buildings would be identical in size, shape, and design. The buildings would be two stories in height and contain four units, four apartments, that is, on each floor. Each unit would have two bedrooms, a living and dining area, kitchen, one and a half bath, and a walk-in closet. The gross floor area per building totals 7,130 square feet, and each building would have a ground floor area or foot, excuse me, footprint area of approximately 3,700 feet. The combined total floor area of all three buildings equals 21,390 square feet, and this translates to a usable floor area in percentage of lot area of 34 percent. Building height would be 29 feet, 1 inches from grade to the roof peak, and as you can see, going back to the site plan, there would be a network of sidewalks around the buildings and each of the parking areas. The buildings themselves would contain a combination of brick as well as stone. The roofs, as you can see from this rendering, would be asphalt shingled. Fiber cement siding would be used on the gable ends, and here are some additional renderings that give you an idea of what the buildings themselves would look like. Going back to the overall plan, so to the north, east, and south of this site are single-family homes. The lots which are along Grandin backing up to the site all measure approximately 62 feet by 113 feet and consist of ranch-style homes with detached garages. Buildings Number One and Number Two, at their closest points from the rear lot lines of the homes along Grandin, would be set back approximately 20 feet. The plan proposes to separate this district with a six-foot-high vinyl fence as well as with a row of evergreen plantings. To the east and to the south are homes that are on acreage parcels fronting along the west side of Oxbow Avenue. Generally, these homes are approximately 140 to 145 feet from the west boundary of the subject parcel. The plan also proposes, in this location, vinyl, six-foot-high vinyl fence with evergreen trees. And then to the south, immediately adjacent to this site, are the Newport Park condominiums. Fully detailed landscape plan has been provided with the documents. This is that plan showing the plantings along the north and east sides of the property as well as throughout the site, including the frontage on Middlebelt Road. The species and sizes of the trees have been detailed. This is something that we did not previously have and has been provided. When we look at the overall plan, this site does have an overall density of about 16 and a half dwelling units per acre, which is slightly more than the 5 to 14 dwelling units per acre that is recommended in the Livonia Vision master plan. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
Our first item is a letter from the Engineering Division, and it's dated May the 5th. It reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above-referenced petition. We have no issue with the proposed waiver use at this time. The subject parcels are assigned the address of 9106 and 9120 Middlebelt Road. The legal descriptions contained within the submittal for the parcels appear to be correct, but the owner will need to combine the properties and create one inclusive legal description for the overall parcel. The existing parcel currently has access to public water main, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer, although the sanitary sewer is located on the west side of Middlebelt Road. At this time, there is nothing that would indicate negative impacts to any of the existing utilities since the petition is for waiver use purposes and shows no utility service details. Should the project move forward, the owner would need to submit drawings to this department as well as Wayne County for the proper plan review and permitting." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated May 9th that reads, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to contain, to construct a residential building on property located at the above-referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, a fire access road, the roadway within the complex as shown on the drawings, shall be provided with not less than 20 feet of unobstructed width and have a minimum of 13 feet, 6 inches of vertical clearance in accordance with NFP 1/2015. Fire hydrants and water supply shall be required according to 18.3 NFPA 1 of 2015. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." That letter is signed by Brian Kucla, Fire Marshal for the city. Next, we have a letter coming from the Public Safety Division of Police dated May the 4th that reads, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. The amount of parking spaces at this location seems to be limited for the amount of units and has the potential for causing traffic problems." That letter is signed by Scott Chapanski, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Inspection Department, signed by Jerome Hanna dated May 9th. Similar letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated May the 3rd and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. A letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated May 3rd and signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. A letter from the Assessment Department dated April 28th that indicates that the parcels should be combined and that the petitioner should be directed to the Assessor's Office for the lot combination process. And then lastly, we have a letter from a resident, from Arida Osada, who gives her address, 29150 Westfield Street, and it reads, "I have been here since 1961. An apartment would be awful there. A business there with low level would be better. Not an apartment. Westfield is loaded with them, but not where, a Westland is loaded with them, but not where you might want one. Also, the condos are nice." It continues, "I live on Westfield, and we all in the short block. Twelve house maintain our homes. This would be a distraction. I am not for it. To me, this would be an eyesore. Sure you have nice neighborhood, then this idea, no. Thanks. Could not make it to the meeting." Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions for our planning staff. Our petitioner or their representative, I believe, is here this evening. You can come forward to our podium, which is over on this side today, and introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. Michael Long was standing in for Sam on short notice due to personal issues, and on behalf of Maple Real Estate Group. To my right is Mr. Ron Edwards, who probably has more ideas to this process that's going on or not.
Okay, I'm Ron Edwards from EGI Architects, 440 Burl Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48202, and we are the architects and planners for this project.
Okay, very good. Thank you for coming this evening, gentlemen. Is there anything that you would like to present to us about this project that hasn't already been covered?
Well, I, oh, do you want to go first?
Either one.
Well, in terms of planning, I think everything was covered thoroughly with the introduction.
Okay.
I was attempting to keep track. I've been given specific notes from Sam, and I'll do my best to keep up to speed on this. I believe the tree screen with regards to the boundary was noted, as well as the six-foot vinyl fencing on the same boundary. With regards to the entire boundary, it's going to be surrounded. It's also my understanding that the dumpsters that will be on the property are going to be housed and moved further away from the residential property. I believe there was a letter that was sent this afternoon via email to some members of the Commission to let them know as to these points. In addition to those matters, and based on the representations that have been made during the study process last week, there will be a stringent application process. People that are going to apply to become residents will have to have a 675 credit score, a new history of non-payment of rents, proof of income, credit references. I believe that those issues were parsed well in the letter that I obviously cited on, so I'm not sure I have much to add other than I believe that it resolves the issues that were brought to our attention at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long. We did receive a detailed letter from the petitioner, so we appreciate that. Is there any questions for our petitioner's representatives from any of the commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
Can you, I can't tell on the map. Can somebody let me know where the dumpsters now are going to be located?
I can help you with that.
All right.
So dumpster number one, adjacent to building number one, is located roughly here, and what we asked the petitioner to do is identify more precisely how that would relate to the land use to the north. In this case, the commercial building is situated right here, so this trash dumpster would be directly across from the commercial building, the residential, the first residential lot on Grandin is located here. Dumpster number two is located here on the property that would serve building number three primarily, and then the third dumpster shown on the plan is situated right here. That would serve building number two. This one probably, while it is away from the residential, may not be the best placement given its direct proximity to the front of that apartment building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Karen Magno?
One of the questions I've got, and it's not a, not related to the actual buildings, but now that we see there's going to be a six-foot vinyl fence going up around the property, how are you going to address existing fences that neighbors have currently with your six-foot vinyl fence?
Doing the best that I can with the limited information I have, and I apologize. I'm unaware of any actual neighborhood fencing that would need to be removed or replaced with regards to our vinyl fence. It's just my indication from Sam that we'd be putting the vinyl fence up and then be surrounding that with regards to the spruce tree on the neighboring boundaries for the residential areas up there. I'm not aware of any fencing that needs to be replaced or anything that would be.
Okay, if there is any existing fence, Mark, what do they do with that?
You know, that becomes an issue. The city does not like to see two fences join one another like that, so we ask that they work with the homeowners to hopefully have those chain-link fences removed and replaced with the six-foot-high vinyl fence if there's, if they're not willing to do that, or if some of the residents, and we typically work out an arrangement to have both the fences, as long as there's maintenance. So that's the issue, really, is just the maintenance between the two fences.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's just an item that certainly is not worth hanging this deal up over, but it's something that you need to be aware of to, when you're working with the neighbors, to get this as good as possible, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from the Commission. Let's see if there's someone in our audience who wishes to speak on this item, and then we'll give you a chance to come back up and make any last comments, all right, Mr. Long?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? If so, I suppose there's a few folks. Please come forward. We'll ask that you start with your name and address, and please limit your comments to about two to three minutes if you can, be succinct, so everybody can be heard. Good evening, ma'am.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Sarah Mathews. I am the, my address is 29197 Grandin, and that kind of puts me right by that dumpster, and I'm really not happy with it. I feel these apartments are going to take the value of our homes down, and I'm not for it at all. I would rather see one story, maybe a condo like there is just next door, but you can tell I'm not for it, so I don't know what else to say about it. It's terrible. I've been there over 40-some years. I had no problem, and now all of a sudden you're going to put this right in my backyard, and I'm going to be right next to a dumpster.
All right, well, we appreciate your comments, Mrs. Mathews.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Willsaw. I live at 29137 Westfield Street. Grandin is the next street over from mine. As I mentioned at the zoning meeting we had, I felt the density of this property was way too much. I understand a owner of property needs to be able to utilize his property, but if this was something that was a little bit more size-wise from a viewpoint of what the condominiums to the south are, I would be totally in favor of that. I understand that. And the new information I saw today with regard to the chain-link fence, all the fences in the neighborhood are three-foot-high. A lot of them are in poor shape because of the frost and the heave and whatnot, so a double fence would be pretty poor. The other thing is, too, is with doing a lot of trees along the fence line, behind the trees ends up becoming a trash collection agency. Alls they got to do is look at any of the Edward Rose properties around the area, and every single time you see all these beautiful trees right up against the fence, and it's nothing but a trash dumpster, and they just don't police it. I'm sure these people, they might police it, they might not, but I'm just telling you from my viewpoint, and I've seen it thousands of times, it's just the trash collection part, so, you know, I don't know what to do different, but that's where I'm at, and if we could reduce the density a little bit, I would be all in favor of it. If we're continuing at the same real heavy density, no, I'm sorry. You know, this is not a big tract of land that is meant to have apartments, and credit scores and all that stuff, and monthly rent doesn't matter. I've got friends that live in the brand-new Live or Live or whatever they're calling it, by the Costco off of Hagerty, and it's a trash pit. It's a horrific place to live, and I wouldn't recommend it for anybody, and that's a couple thousand bucks a month rent. And so, that's where I'm at. Thank you very much for your time. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill Schmidt. I live at 29688 McIntyre, in the general neighborhood of where this development is proposed. At the planning meeting last week, I mentioned that there is not a single multifamily rental unit within the entire square mile of Section 36, nor is there one in the square mile of Section 35, or 34, or 33. There's nothing 29, 28, 27. According to the Livonia 21 Plan, the idea is to have like establishments in proximity to one another. There's nothing like this around, not for miles. You have to go up to five miles to get to a multifamily rental unit. This is in violation of the Centra, of the Livonia 21 Plan. It is not in keeping with the single-family neighborhood, not in five years, and certainly not in 50 years, when the extended lifespan of this apartment would come to a end. This is not in benefit to the single-family homes, to the folks that have lived there for 40 years, 50 years. This is a violation of their trust in you to do the right thing and protect their property. You wouldn't want one in your neighborhood. So I thank you for your time, and I implore you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Srin. Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name's Sean Murphy. I live at 29481 Westfield Street. In fact, on that map, that plot map, my house is right on it. You know, I'm here to express my objections. This is going to change the entire nature of this neighborhood. In fact, just recently Emerson split in half and sold half of that parcel just in the same neighborhood, and they didn't erect a giant apartment complex, they're building single-family houses, because that's what is in this area, single-family houses. If you've been to that lot, that lot's tiny, you can blink and you could drive right past it. It took me twice to go by it, and I see it. This is a tiny lot, and you're going to put three apartment buildings on it. It, I'll give it five years, 10 max, this place is going to be trash, and it's going to negatively impact this entire neighborhood and this whole area. You know, I was born and raised in Livonia. I moved into Livonia, I bought my own house in Livonia in a single-family neighborhood. This is earshot away, I hit a golf club at this thing, and, you know, if you guys put me on notice that, I wouldn't have bought this house, frankly, you know? It's just not for it. I think somebody on this board actually announced that it exceeds the master plan in terms of, in terms of density. So how is this even here? You know, we have Livonia, we have a nice neighborhood in there, and this is just, this is just not something that fits into the equation of the neighborhood that is Livonia. So, you know, I'd just like to express my complete disgust with the plan, and, you know, I hope everybody here votes this down.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks.
My name's Don Schechel. I live at 29161 Grandin. Been a resident there on that street since they first built those homes, 1955. So I know the history back there and everything. Couple issues with this one, and it's been mentioned several times, is the density of the housing units. And it's not just the fact that it's on, was it 1.7 acres or whatever, and there's so many units allowed, so. The units have to be pushed back because the front side of that property is very narrow, so you can't build anything up there. So it has to be all pushed back, so you got the three units pushed back right behind our houses. One of the things that I thought we'd find out in this meeting is, what are the waivers that this developer's asking for? Because normally, what would be the amount of distance from our lot lines where they'd be able to build a structure if it was zoned housing instead of a commercial?
We'll try to get that question answered for you after, after everyone's done, we'll get that asked.
Okay, I'm just, and then the other thing is, too, Ms. Toramina brought up the third dumpster. You didn't think it was good because it's right outside the one building. So where does she plan on putting the dumpster, right behind my house? Okay, then you talk about the fencing, the fence line along there, we all have the cyclone fences, been there for years and years and years, okay? And you want to put trees right along the fencing, so how am I going to clear the growth on the other side of my fencing? Secondly, you have the electrical lines. So what if we do plant a bunch of trees underneath the electrical lines that in a couple of years, they got to come and cut them all down because they're interfering with the electrical lines? That's one thing that needs, there was a simple thing to look at. Totally against the entire project. It's too dense for the area, they're not, the buildings are too close to the property lines, and you just got, like I said, and a lot of other people have mentioned already, a lot of issues with this. It's a bad idea, very bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Schechel. Appreciate you coming. And we have one more young lady to speak. Good evening, ma'am.
My name's Karen Schechel. I live at 29161 Grandin with Don. I grew up in that house, moved in in 1962 with my mom and dad and brother, and we knew the Venturas, nice people, wonderful people. I understand why Pete wants to sell the property, no big deal, and I understand, too, that the property needed to be developed. For some reason, somebody thinks that's a good idea. The apartments are a horrible idea, horrible. My biggest concern is the proximity to our yard and where our property line and where this building is going to be. My second concern are those dumpsters. I don't care where you put them, we already have rats in our neighborhood, as most people that I know in Livonia neighborhoods, there is a rat issue, and the more dumpsters you put up, the more food's going to end up on the ground, you're going to get a bunch of animals going over for it, and we're going to have more rats. I don't want more rats. I don't want the smell. I don't want an apartment complex. I'd be fine if you wanted, okay, a condo unit, even if it's two-story, I'd prefer one. I'd prefer just green space, but I think that when we come into the city of Livonia and any main street you come in, it says families first, and I'm not seeing that because everything so far has been going through with no problems, so are you looking at the families you want to bring into the city, or are you looking at the? looking at the families you want to bring into the city, or are you looking at the families that are already here, or everyone as a whole? Because to me, it looks like you're only interested in the people that are coming in. Right now, you're not looking at the people who are already living here. We've been here for a long time, a lot of us, Sarah, my husband and I, a long time, and we don't want this complex. And so I really, I implore you to vote no on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Shekel. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? I believe everyone else has had a chance to speak, so I'm gonna give the petitioner a chance to come up, their representatives, and say anything if they wish, based on the comments that they've heard. Make any closing comments.
I think it's only fair to respond to a few of these, even though we may never see eye. First, I wanted to thank everybody for your comments, and I'm filling in, so.
Mr. Longo, please address your comments to us.
My apologies. I, I I hear a couple of comments with regards to property values going down. I'm not sure where that would come from, or if that's even the case, with regards to condos rather than apartments. I think that's something that they explored, and the cost of materials, the cost of labor shortages out there, it just, it's not feasible. Whether or not condos would be a different density from apartments, I'm not sure if that's actually a thing. With regards to dumpster issues, we've already gone over the fact that the whole property is gonna be lined by the fencing, so it's not gonna be visible. The dumpsters themselves are gonna be encased in their own little compartments, so the smells aren't gonna escape. I'm assuming that there's gonna be a lot on front of those, so animals aren't gonna get in them like any, any sort of dumpster compartment would have on the lots. Let's see. The, the density issue I hear coming up an awful lot, it's my understanding that the housing alone is gonna be 11,000 square feet total. However, the total land that's gonna be left over that, which will be used as landscaping and greenery, will be around 51,000 square feet, you know, for landscaping and parking lots and everything like that. So there's, there's really a five to one as to what's gonna be housing, and what's gonna be everything else. Let me see, we've already touched on the double fencing issue, that that's not gonna be a thing. We're gonna have a single fencing if the use is permitted. I'm trying to address the trash collection idea in my mind, and again, it's my understanding that the fencing will be on the outside of the trees. Trees will be on the inside of lots. So any kind of trash that's a collection at the base of the tree, I would presume would be, you know, that's created from the apartment complex, I would assume would be on the inside of that fencing, not visible with regards to any of the adjacent residents. Let me see, what else here? I, I, I think that's pretty much all I have to say about that. I did know that a lot of the individuals were making note how this has been this way since, you know, the 60s or the 50s, and it sounds like they'd prefer no, no development, and just have, remain as it is. And I'm not sure if that's an option or not. So I have nothing further to add.
All right, Mr. Longo, do you want to stay up there for one second? We'll see if there's any additional questions from any of our commissioners before we close things out. Is there any questions for our petitioner? If not, Mr. Longo, I do have one question for you. In regards to property management, how is this property gonna be managed? Is there gonna be a designated manager? Is there gonna be a person on site? How is that gonna handle it?
I, it's my understanding that there's gonna be a property management on-site to take care of the property itself. And Sam's office deals with a couple different property managers that have management, that manage properties in Warren, East Point, Livonia, and I think there's a couple other areas. Lincoln Park, I think, is another one. Mostly, these management companies, they manage apartment complexes, they manage regular housing. So they're used to the issues that get, that arise. They're used to getting rid of people that are trashing places. So I think they're really on top of their game. From anything that I've seen at his office for the last nine years. So, I, I, property management company for sure, on-site.
Okay, so will there be an office for them to be in, or is it gonna be a person who's a resident full-time there?
I, I don't have that information on hand, but I know that there is gonna be property management, management. And if it's the recommendation of the commission to have an office on-site, I don't see why they would be opposed to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there any, any other questions from any of our commissioners? One, one more shot. If there's nothing, I'll miss McQ.
I think the one thing that I need clarification on is the fencing. I've heard that there isn't any fences in the adjoining, adjacent properties, but yet, people are telling us that there is. And forgive me, I guess I did not explore that close enough to really know. I'm a little concerned at this point about approving it, and then ending up with double fencing, because that is a huge problem.
Right. And, and I don't have any information as to whether or not
So I guess I almost
there is fencing that's on that property, that would be in the way of any fencing that we would put up with regards to this development. I don't have information with regards to that. And I, I'm not sure if anybody actually brought proof that their fencing would be on that line.
All right, Mr. Bongiaro.
To Betsy's point, there is fencing on that north side. Pretty much every yard had fencing out on there. So it's gonna be an issue coming up.
Yeah.
For sure. I saw.
Yeah, cyclone fences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, how do we address that? And I don't know if that goes back to Mr. Tormina, or goes back to the petitioner. I'm not sure, but that's a problem.
It's a fair question, yes. Mr. Tormina, is there any thoughts you have?
Yeah, I think I responded to that question previously.
Right.
I said, we tried to have just a single fence, but if the homeowner has insisted on maintaining that, their chain link fence, then the result would probably be a double fence line. So it may, it may, it may be a combination of one or two fences
Right.
along that north side of the property. If the site plan shows that there must be a, either a wall, or a six-foot vinyl fence, then that has to be installed. Again, we try to, try to have the petitioner work with the adjoining property owners to see if their fence could be removed, but it's not always
It's just not always gonna happen, right?
Always gonna happen, that's correct.
I guess that's my point. Okay, thank you.
And that's also when you run into the situation, as some of the residents described, where it's difficult to trim grass, or weeds that are growing up between double fences. There's no way to get in between those. So it becomes a real tidiness issue. So, okay. And then, you're all set, Mrs. McQ?
Yeah, I think so.
Great, thank you. And there was one question, Mr. Tormina, that was asked by a resident, and I wanted to make sure we, we answer. In terms of any waivers, or anything in terms of side yard setbacks, lot lines, or anything for this property, or is this a conforming development that's before us?
Yeah, so as I explained, really through the zoning process, and maybe not so much this evening, as a planned residential development, the, the, the plan is afforded a great degree of flexibility and discretion. It's really something that the Planning Commission and City Council determines through the review process, what the appropriateness is in terms of all the height, area, and bulk standards. If this were proposed as a conventional development, depending on the zoning classification being used, that setback distance would probably vary from between 25 to 50 to 75 feet, depending on the various zoning classifications. Certainly, if it was a three-story building, then the minimum setback would be 75 feet. The ordinance for the NM2, or other multifamily classification, that allows for apartment buildings, those setbacks for the side yard and for the rear yard varies between 25 to 50 feet. So, again, just to compare, just to show you what these setbacks are. So building number one, at its closest point here, is 20 feet from the north property line. Building number two, at its closest point, is probably about 30 feet from this property line. And as you can see, kind of as it could move further to the east, that, that setback, actually for both buildings, increases slightly. So it varies from between 20 to 50 feet.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. If there's no other questions, oh, Mrs. Smiley.
On that note, what, they were specifically asking what other waivers they had to have. Their dumpsters are away from the property line, at least 20 feet, right?
There's no minimum setback requirement for a dumpster.
Okay.
So there's no waiver, if you will, being sought relative to the placement of the dumpster. Again, this is a PRD, a planned residential development, and it's really something that is determined by the Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay, so there's no other waivers besides the setbacks that there?
Yeah, we talked about the parking. The original plan showed a few more parking spaces. The, the standard zoning requirement or recommendation is two spaces per unit. That would be 48 total spaces. The zoning ordinance, however, allows us to look at other sources, including the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual. And when we do that, the recommendation is, is something slightly less than two spaces per unit. In this case, they're showing 1.75. So we believe that is adequate, and that is in line with other multifamily developments that we've seen recently. So we're not concerned with the amount of parking being provided here. So, so no waiver is required there.
Okay.
We mentioned the density. The master plan does recommend, as I said, a density range of between five and 14 dwelling units per acre. In this case, they're proposing, I think it was 16 and a half dwelling units per acre. So it is a slightly higher, there's about four-unit difference between what this project shows and what the master plan, not the zoning ordinance, but what the master plan would recommend in terms of overall density.
Okay, and didn't we discuss about doing away with some of the parking, so that would be more green space?
Yeah, that was, that was really intended to increase that, the buffer along the residential lines, single-family property lines, in order to get that row of trees, those evergreen trees, so that we would supplement the screening with not only the fence, but with, with some full-size evergreen trees. In this case, they're showing spruce trees along the backside of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? I think we're all set then. Thank you, Mr. Longo, for coming.
Thank you so much.
And with no other further questions or comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time, and the motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
I'll make an approving resolution. If the request to develop a planned residential development consisting of an apartment complex on the properties at 9106 and 9120 Middle Belt Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval in the following conditions. If the site plan identified as drawing one dated May 9, 2022, as revised, prepared by Edwards Group International, Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. The landscape plan identified as drawing OF dated May 10, 2022, prepared by Edwards Group International, Inc., is hereby approved in concept. Accepted a final plan prepared by a registered landscape architect shall be submitted to the planning department for prior approval prior to any construction. Said plan shall include a continuous row, row of evergreen trees along the north and east property lines, where the site abuts any single-family properties, and shall be properly identified. All proposed plans according to species, size, and numbers. Number three, that all disturbed lawn areas, including road, road rights of way, shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. Number four, that underground sprinklers that are to be provided for, all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department, and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number five, all parking spaces except the required handicap spaces shall be double striped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length as required. Number six, that the exterior building elevation plans identified as drawings five and six, dated October 12, 2021, prepared by Edwards, Edwards Group International, Inc., are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that the maximum height of any pole-mounted light fixtures shall be 16 feet, and shall be located and shielded to prevent light trespass and glare on adjacent properties. Number eight, that the exterior walls of the trash enclosures be constructed out of the same brick used in the construction of the buildings, and the enclosure gate shall consist of solid panel, steel, or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. Number nine, that the issues as outlined in the correspondence stated May 9, 22, from the fire marshal, including the recommended width and vertical clearance of the roadway, and the placement of fire hydrants shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Safety Livonia Fire and Rescue. Number 10, that this site shall meet either the City of Livonia or Wayne County Storm Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and the developer shall secure any required permits, including stormwater management permits, wetland permits, and soil erosion and sedimentation control permits. Number 11, the developer and all of, all of the contractors and subcontractors shall employ best management practices to prevent, reduce, and mitigate the problems associated with soil erosion, airborne dust, and dirt from migrating off-site, including provisions for erosion control barriers, daily street sweeping, watering, and halting earthwork activities on days when the wind conditions are likely to cause a problem. Number 12, that only a conforming entrance marker is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number 13, that all required cash deposits, certified checks, irrevocable bank letters of credit, and/or surety, surety bonds shall be deposited with the City of Livonia prior to the issuance of engineering permits, and pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of approval by City Council, and unless the building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
All right, is there support for that?
Uh-oh.
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve, made by Mr. Care Magna, and supported by Mrs. Smiley. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just, could we put something in there that they will work to eliminate that double fence thing, to work with the neighbors, or try to come up with a plan so that we don't have the double fence area?
Mr. Tormina, do you think there's a way that we can incorporate something like that?
Yeah, we'll, you would have to, you know,
Speak up, please.
We'd have to put some language together to encourage that as best as possible. I'd have to find out more from the inspection department, what they normally do when they're confronted with this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Care Magna, you're up here.
Yeah, something to encourage, the, the, the one fence solution, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? If there's nothing, then, Mr. Secretary, please call a roll on a motion to approve.
Care Magna votes aye. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mr. Bongiaro?
No.
Mr. Long?
No.
Chairman Rochelle?
Well, this is gonna be awkward. The chairman votes no, and the motion fails for lack of support.
Okay.
I will now open the floor up to any additional motions.
So Mr. Chairman, obviously with a 3-3 vote, denying resolution is likely to meet the same fate. So when we have a hung, hung jury, what's our, what are our options here?
Well, we could, we could try a vote on a denying resolution, and see if anybody's gonna change their mind. It's not to say that they will.
Correct.
Beyond that, we're at a stalemate.
So with a stalemate, then does it go on to council with no recommendation, or?
I don't know that we've ever had that situation, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I do know that City Council, when they're confronted with this same situation, has rendered a determination that the project denied for failure to have a
Positive.
Positive vote, that's correct. If that's, so, so your option is to either leave it, or an alternative motion that would table it, and if there's a majority, that would be in favor of tabling it, to see whether or not the petitioner is willing to come back with any changes that might be, meet the, meet the planning commission's approval.
That's a good, good suggestion. Tabling is always an option. Mr. Long?
So I would understand that with City Council, because they're all, they're the ultimate arbiter of that. We're just recommending. Since we're just recommending, it would seem to me to be prudent to just send it along with no, with no recommendation whatsoever, and not rather, whether, nor deny.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Tormina.
Is that, in that case, we would advise the petitioner that they would have to file an appeal, to go, to move this forward
In order to.
to, to the City Council.
Okay.
And that was, because that's, whether it was formally denied, or even Uh, and that was, because that's, whether it was formally denied or even a
Pocket denied.
Then it would have to go through an appeal process, uh, to be heard by council.
Exactly. And at the end of the day, uh, just so the folks in our audience are aware, we are just a recommending body to city council. Uh, they are the ultimate decider of all our petitions that come before us this evening. Uh, we are just simply vetting the process and trying to give a recommendation as to whether it should be approved or denied, but ultimately, city council will have to make that decision. So if there is no, uh, other motions offered by any of the commissioners, which there are, we've heard a couple of different options, uh, laid out before us, I'll give one more chance to see if there is any other motions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero?
If so, is it, it's, we're not going to invite them back and table this, right? That's kind of out.
Tabling is always an option if you think that there's some changes that could be made that would change the vote process, uh, by anybody. If, if we don't think that that's the case and we just want to let this proceed on to city council, then we would, uh, not offer any other additional motions at this time and it would effectively be denied, uh, by lack of support.
And then an appeal to.
And then they could appeal to city council.
That's okay. Thank you.
Is that clear to everybody?
Mm-huh.
And there's no other motions from anybody? If not, then that's where we're going to leave things standing. Uh, we do not have support for this, uh, recommendation to approve this. Therefore, it is by proxy effectively denied. Uh, you will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. All right, Mr. Longo? Thank you to everyone who came this evening. And if you want to continue to follow this through city council, please make sure to look for those meetings in the future if that, uh, is appealed and goes onto their agenda. All right. Thank you, everyone. With that, we will now move on to item number two on the public hearing section of our agenda.
That is petition two zero two-two dash zero three dash zero two dash zero eight, submitted by Tissio Architects, Inc., on behalf of True Heel Veterinary Clinic, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section six point five-nine of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, as amended to operate a veterinary clinic at two-seven-four-eight-eight Five Mile Road, located on the north side of Five Mile Road between Inkster and Fosh Avenue on the southeast quarter of section thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And we will note in the minutes that, uh, Mr. Ventura returned to the dais at seven fifty-two P.M. Welcome back.
Good to be back.
Mr. Toramina, item number two.
Thank you. Again, this is a request, a request to operate a veterinary clinic uh, on Five Mile Road between Green Lane and Fosh Avenue. Uh, this property is roughly, uh, point one-eight acre in size. It has fifty feet of frontage by a hundred and sixty feet in depth for a total area of eight thousand square feet. So it's a small, uh, property. It's currently, uh, zoned, uh, both C-one, local business and P, parking. It's, uh, the southerly part of the, the site, uh, which is the commercial zoning. That's where the building is located. And then the rear forty feet of the property is zoned, uh, for parking only. Uh, the site contains a one-story building. That's about thirty-one hundred square feet in size. Uh, this original structure, or the original structure, was only, uh, fifteen hundred square feet. That was built in nineteen sixty-two as a bookkeeping and accounting office. And then in the mid-nineteen-sixties, uh, the building was expanded to its, uh, current size. Uh, off-street parking is available both, uh, in the front of the building as well as behind, uh, the building. Uh, veterinary clinics, um, and animal clinics and animal hospitals are treated as a waiver use in the C-one zoning district. Uh, to the west is commercial, uh, zoning. Uh, to the east is a vacant parcel that is zoned for N.M. One, neighborhood multifamily development. And then to the north are residential homes that are part of the Parkway subdivision. Uh, the plan that was submitted with the application, the floor plan, shows how the interior of the building would be remodeled. It would include an exam, a surgery, and X-ray rooms. There would be a treatment center, uh, office, uh, reception waiting area, uh, public restrooms, and then a utility room as well as a, an employee, uh, bake, break room. Uh, there would not be any outdoor runways, kennels, or pens. Uh, in terms of parking for veterinary clinics, a requirement is one space for every two hundred square feet of usable area. Uh, would require a total of thirteen parking spaces. The site plan shows nine parking spaces, four of which are in front of the building adjacent to Five Mile Road and then five located behind, uh, the, uh, building. These rear parking spaces are accessible, uh, via an easement that runs through the rear parking lot of the adjacent commercial property to the west. As I indicated at, during the previous petition, the zoning ordinance does allow the city to adjust the numerical requirements for off-street, off-street parking, based on evidence that another standard would be more reasonable. We did take a look at the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual and the average rate of peak-period parking demand for every one thousand square feet of gross floor area of a similar use is three point three. So what that means is when you, when you apply that ratio to the size of this building, it would result in a need for ten parking spaces. Again, they're providing nine, so we're right there. I think it's important this evening that we establish record, uh, that the nine spaces would be suitable for this use, uh, depending on the number of vets, uh, running the clinic, the number of employees, and what they anticipate in terms of, uh, customer demand. Uh, the plans do not show a dumpster on the property. Uh, it was indicated that, that would be handled by, uh, separate contractors. Landscaping, um, they're showing some additional front, uh, trees in the front of the building as well as, uh, shrubs. Uh, and then there are no other site improvements, uh, other than an awning and maybe painting the building. The one issue that did come up was a small retaining wall on the east side of the property. The petitioner indicated, uh, their willingness to remove that, that small, or that short wall, if you will, because, uh, it is leaning currently and it really doesn't serve any functional, uh, purpose in terms of, uh, of retaining purposes. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have mostly, uh, letters of no objection. The first coming from the Office of Treasure, dated April fifth and signed by Linda Sheehan. Uh, the second, second from the Department of Finance dated April eighth and signed by Connie Campula, uh, chief accountant for the city. Letter of no objection from the inspection department dated April nineteenth, signed by Jerome Hannah. Uh, we have a letter, uh, from, uh, the police division that reads, and this is dated March twenty-ninth. According to the site plan, there are only three standard parking spaces and one handicap parking space, allowing for a total of four vehicles to park at the business at one time. Veterinary offices can become very busy throughout the day with many people showing up at any given time. My primary concern is the lack of sufficient parking space available to accommodate when business traffic becomes heavy and the lack of space for additional vehicles to park. I am also concerned about the lack of space allotted for employee parking. Uh, that letter is signed by Scott Shapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Again, I don't, I'm not aware that Mr. Shapansky, uh, or was not, was not aware of the parking at the rear of the building. I'll just point that out.
Okay.
Um, a letter of no objection, objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated March thirty-first and signed by Brian Cock, uh, Ku- Kucla, Senior Fire Inspector. And then lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the, uh, Department of Engineering dated March twenty-eighth and signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner is in the audience. Good evening, Mr. Tissio.
Bonas aid.
Hello.
Ben Tissio, Tissio Architects, nineteen-eight fifteen Farmington Road. And, uh, I did want to point out some things about the parking issue. Uh, if you note on the, uh, floor plan, we have four exam rooms and that's all we can have here, uh, because there's going to be one doctor on staff, receptors, and one other assistant. That's all, again, this size of a clinic, that's all you can have. So you can't have more people there. Uh, so the four spaces in front should take care of one for each of the four exam rooms. And again, we have three employees parking. There's five spots in the back. So from a practical standpoint, we, we actually exceed the parking that are going to be required for the site. And again, this is going to be a small neighborhood operation. It's not intended to be a big clinic where a lot of people are going to be coming out. Again, it'll be one doctor, uh, an assistant, and a receptionist there. Um, so, uh, with that, um, I, I don't have any other questions. I mean, any other answers to any question? I didn't hear any real objections to it. And, and thanks again, um, Mr. Bonjero for bringing up that fence that's leaning. I should have put it on the drawings, but I did not. So, uh, we will be taking that down.
Okay.
And we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. It's been a couple of weeks, a few weeks since we've seen you.
Yes.
So we may have some questions that have popped up. Uh, any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Long?
Mr. Chair, thank you. A couple of questions. Um, with the, so, so much of the parking in the rear, will there be, uh, access in the front as well as the rear for people? Or will have, people have to walk around in order to get into the building?
Uh, no, there is a back door. So if, let's say another customer came in and there's only the four spots in front were occupied, they could go around to the back of the building. There is another door in the back that they can enter the clinic in. It's not ideal only because that back portion is not really available to the public.
Okay.
And also, I know one of the things that came up last time was that there's a lack of a dumpster on the site. Uh, one, there's no real room to have that there. Two, we do have a roll-away dumpster inside. If you note on the plan, it's in the back vestibule, if you will, and that will be rolled out once a week as it is needed. Uh, there are not going to be any barking dogs. There's no running track. This is strictly a veterinary clinic where they bring their animals in and they get treated there. They're not spending any time overnight. If they have to have any sur- real surgery, they would go to another clinic. So this is going to be a real neighborhood function.
Um, continuing on that, so with the, uh, with the lack of a dumpster and the, the waste removal only happening once a week, is that, is that a concern? Is that ideal for a veterinary clinic with waste, animal, animal waste and such?
Again, uh, it, I'm sure you're familiar with trash pickup. You can call up and have them picked up every day. It's a matter of how do you schedule it? I have, uh, clients that have multiple shopping centers and, and in some cases, they have to have the trash picked up four times a week because they don't have room for more dumpsters. That's simply a matter of function of, of determining when they need to be picked up.
And then, uh, my last question is, you know, I'm, I'm actually quite in favor of this. I think this is a, a great, uh, idea. Um, but with one doctor, what happens, uh, should he decide he wants to take a day off for a vacation or something like that? Is it closed?
Then they'll be closed.
Do you bring in another? You just close down?
Will there be substituting doctor or will it just?
Use the microphone. Our, our vast TV audience would like to hear you.
Oh, hi. Hi, everybody. My name is Maria. Uh, so I am the building owner and the manager. Um, I'm not the doctor, if I can cure your pet, but, um, so the idea is that we will bring a substituting doctor uh, for the time that we're away or just, uh, there's a lack of veterinarian, as everybody knows. Um, if we cannot find one, a good one, then we'll just put a sign on the door and go on vacation.
Okay.
The idea is that it's a very small boutique hospital, you know, and a very small operation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner this evening? Mr. Chairman?
Um, excuse me. I got a couple of questions. You just a word, use the word hospital.
Correct.
Is this a veterinary hospital or a veterinary clinic?
Veterinary clinic.
So it's not a hospital?
So I don't really know the official difference between the clinic and a hospital. So I think, um, I don't know if anybody can fill me in. So there will be, um, there, there are vaccinations clinics and that's, that is not one of them. We will be conducting treatment of animals. There will be no animals left overnight. So if an animal is there past five o'clock and needs additional help, he will, he, the, the pet owner will be referred to an emergency clinic or a neighboring clinic. So, um, theoretically, it's more than just seeing pets. Uh, so that's why I think we call it hospital is because there will be minor medical procedures conducted. There will be a, a surgery room. But, so that, therefore, we kind of, I feel like we ought to call it hospital.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I too am concerned about the parking here. Uh, how, how are patients going to know if all the spaces in front are full? That spaces in the back are accessible to them?
I'm going to design a pretty sign that will say parking in the rear.
But how do they know where, where the rear is?
Oh, so.
You've got to, you've got to leave the site, get back on Five Mile Road, go over to Foke and up Foke and then in.
I mean.
How, how do they find that out?
You're absolutely correct. It's not intuitive. So besides the signage on the front, at the time of them, them making an appointment, we will, you know, try to make sure that the receptionist explained for the lack of parking that you have to go around the building. Again, this is, uh, we are expecting very little walk-in traffic because of only one doctor. So majority of patients will be there because they have, they're weather regulars, they're there for a regular visit or they have made an appointment. So I don't think we will have capacity for just walk-in traffic.
So is the, is the physician, is, is the, uh, veterinary physician that's going in this space already in Livonia?
No.
So he doesn't have an existing, uh?
He's practicing in the, in the neighboring city and he.
All right. So those, those animals are not going to be coming to Livonia?
No, no, no. They're not be, no, they're not, he's not taken. If you're asking if he's taken the clientele from where he's, uh, practicing currently, that is not a possibility.
And will he be running both, both operations?
No, no, this will be the only operation. Because, um, uh, when we came first time for the discovery session, the doctor was actually present. So, and he kind of explained his thinking. No, he will be working, that will be the only business he'll have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still concerned about the parking. We put another veterinary hospital in the southern end of the city that wasn't any bigger than this. And after they were in the building, their people were parked all over the place. I mean, in the streets, on the adjacent lots. I mean, I just don't see how the parking works here. I understand you've got four rooms, but if you've got four rooms that are full and you have people coming in for their next appointments. I mean, when I take my animals to the veterinary hospital or the veterinary clinic, it's, the waiting rooms are full. And so it's not a matter of how many operators you have or how many exam rooms you've got. It's how many patients you have. And I don't know how this, how you make this work. I really don't.
Part, part of it is scheduling. And unfortunately, a lot of medical clinics double book. It's that plain and simple. And they shouldn't be, but they do.
Yeah. I don't know that our, ours double books, uh, Mr. Tissio, but there's an overlap between exam and intake. It's, while you're going through the process, you've got two customers out there, but.
I have a comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. Go ahead and make your.
Just about the parking. So, um, the veterinarian happens to be my husband, so I know him intimately. But, um, as a lot of, there's another veterinary hospital present here. So most of the veterinarians are overworked, overbooked, overtired. So the idea for this business venture in my family is to relieve that situation. So, uh, the idea is to have a very accurately planned, pre-scheduled boutique hospital. So we do happen to have a building with four exam rooms and it is my deep hope that there will not be all full at the same time. So again, I think that wherever you take your animal, it might be a bigger hospital. Um, this will not be one of this kind of like production line bigger hospitals.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnon.
Just, just on, on the theme of parking, i- is it your intent that any employees park in the back?
Of course, yes.
Of the hospital?
That, that's, that goes without saying.
Clinic or whatever, whatever it was called? Okay. Very good. Is there an opportunity to put a, a small sign on Fosh that says veterinary parking or clinic par- whatever it is?
Yeah.
Clinic parking?
If it's necessary, we'd be willing to do that, correct.
And maybe, uh, maybe, uh, something that, that would help.
Another thing was we did have a conversation with the neighboring business and they are willing to rent us spaces if necessary. So that is also a possibility.
Okay. What's in that neighboring business now?
Um, I believe the next-door neighbor, is it a gun shop?
It's a gunsmith, yeah.
Gunsmith? It's the, guarding the adjacent property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all.
I'm pretty sure they're, they have an excess of parking spots when the, when you take a look at the number of spaces that they have.
Is it possible, Mr. Tissio, you could secure cross-parking access?
Well, we do, uh, we have cross-access.
Cross-access, right.
We do have that. That was part of the, uh, nineteen sixty-two, uh, approval with the property. But we have not entered into an agreement for any additional parking if it's required.
Might be something, uh, to do between now and, uh, council.
Yeah, we can pursue that further. If we get approval tonight, we could have something, at least in a draft form, for the city council.
Sure, sure. That might ease some of the, the concerns that you hear tonight. Uh, any other questions from any of the commissioners? Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? I don't see anybody coming forward. So there's no one to speak on this. Uh, we'll go back to our petitioner for any final comments.
I, I don't have any. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And, uh, if there's no further comments or questions, I'll close the public hearing and a motion would be in order.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Smiley.
I will make an approving resolution that this request to operate a veterinary clinic at 27488 Five Mile Road shall be approved subject to the following conditions. That the site and floor plans elevations identified as sheet number P1 dated March the 25th of 2022, prepared by Tissio Architects Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the landscaping shown on the approval, on the approved plan shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department. That all disturbed lawn areas, including roads right-ofways, shall be sotted in lieu of hydroseeding. That the operation of the subjects used shall not include an overnight boarding or care of animals. That there shall be no outside dumpster located on the site, and all trash must be contained within the building except on the day the trash is scheduled to be removed. That all animal remains, medical and animal waste, shall be properly disposed of. That adequate soundproofing shall be installed to the extent necessary to ensure the elimination of all noise from the building. That the use of open or outdoor runways, kennels, or pens are prohibited. That only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. That no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. That the specific plan referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And pursuant to section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only. From the date of the approval by the city council, unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
I heard Mr. Bonjero on that one.
You give it to that.
Mr. Bonjero wants to be graceful and give it to Mrs. McHugh.
Give it to the lady.
We'll give it to Mrs. McHugh.
Good.
Such a gentleman.
Very, very much so. Chavori is not dead.
Right?
So we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I wonder if Mrs. Smiley would entertain an additional condition to the effect that the petitioner would seek and obtain cross-exempt parking agreement with the adjacent.
I think that's a fair thing, is that okay?
And that way, you know, we're assured that there's a safety valve for parking.
Okay, all right, it sounds like everybody's in support of that, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley.
Thank you, Mrs., or Mr. Ventura, for offering that suggestion. Is there any other questions or comments before we vote on this motion? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Caremagnon votes aye. Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye, motion passes, and we'll go to city council with an approved recommendation. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. And now we move on to item number three on our agenda.
Number three is petition 2022-03-02-10, submitted by Accelerated Towing and Recovery, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to sections 3.16 and 6.58 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended to operate a vehicle tow yard at 12780 Wayne Road, located on the east side of Wayne Road, just south of Schoolcraft in the northwest quarter of section 28.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, a request to operate a vehicle tow yard. This is on Wayne Road, south of Schoolcraft Road. In this case, the property is roughly 68, 0.68 acres. It's 100 feet in width by 290 feet in depth. The zoning, as you can see, is M1 light manufacturing, and the site is completely surrounded by other industrial properties. The existing building, which is located on this property, is on the front part of the site. This building is roughly 6,000 square feet in size. This includes 4,800 square feet of shop area and approximately 1,200 square feet of office space. Parking is available on the south side of the building, as well as behind the building on the east side. The proposed tow storage yard would be within the rear yard. This fenced-in area is about 13,000 square feet. It contains a gravel surface. Gated access to the proposed vehicle tow yard would be located next to the southeast corner of the building. In the front of the building, next to the office, there's an existing truck well. I'm not sure whether or not that, that would serve any purpose for the proposed use. There are eight paved parking spaces shown on the south side of the building. Those would be available for customers. The gravel tow storage yard has a capacity to accommodate roughly 25 parking spaces for both recovered vehicles and company tow yards. The site plan does not show any trash containers. Landscaping requires one full-size tree, as well as one ornamental, ornamental tree and 10 shrubs. The plan does show one existing full-size tree, two ornamentals, and 18 shrubs, so they are showing the required amount of landscaping. In terms of exterior lighting, the plan is showing wall packs, which would be placed on the rear wall of the building. We're not sure how the, the south parking spaces are illuminated, but the rear appears to, would be lit up using these wall packs. Signage, the site would be allowed one sign, one wall sign measuring 25 square feet, but we do not have details on that. With that, I will read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
Thank you. From our Office of Treasure, they indicate no objections. That letter is dated April 5th and signed by Linda Sheel. We do have a letter from the Department of Finance dated April 8th that reads, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. The following amounts are due to the City of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges, $222.82. Total due to the City of Livonia, $222.82." That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant for the city. Next is a letter coming from the inspection department dated April 19th, and it reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, the rear of this property is gravel. The petitioner would need to pave the rear lot within two years if this petition moves forward. Number two, a zoning compliance permit and inspections of the building and property will be required if this petition moves forward. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police, signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated April 18th, indicating that we have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. On the submitted plans, please include the nearest fire hydrant locations. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." That letter is signed by Brian Kukla, Senior Fire Inspector. And then lastly, a letter of no objection from the Engineering Division. That letter is dated March 28th and signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff?
What do?
Mrs. Smiley?
Currently, what, what's in there right now, Mark? Or Toramina?
I don't know the actual business use, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I'm looking at this overhead, and I was just curious what's going on there.
Business that, that has a very strange way of storing their equipment in the back, I can tell you that. It's based on the aerial photograph from whenever this aerial was taken.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, is our petitioner in the audience? Welcome to come forward to our podium.
Good evening.
Well, I ask that you start with your name and address.
Michael Fields, 14310 21 Half Mile Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fields. And is there anything else that you'd like to add to this petition?
No, not at the current moment.
Okay, is there any questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnon.
Sir, when you were here, seems like an eternity ago with the study session, you told me you had a towing yard and, off a telegraph road.
Correct.
Was it Tamara?
We rent space from Tamara, 25 spots.
Okay, do you keep equipment there?
Nothing other than our trucks.
What do you, what do you keep in the 25 spots that, that you hold for Tamara?
Well, we were keeping cars that needed to go to insurance companies or collision shops or what have you, but we've downsized to, down to 10 spots.
So you, I'm sorry, you said you dialed back to 10 spots?
Yes.
Yeah, because I drove by there, I didn't see any accelerated equipment towing, I didn't see any, any smashed up cars, I didn't see anything there.
Yep, we've, we've stopped doing a lot of roadside, so we don't really have the need for that much space anymore.
But you still hold that spot, but you don't utilize the?
In case we need it.
It's, oh, it's in the event that you need it?
Auxiliary, in case we need it.
Okay, so where do you, where do you operate out of now?
Right now, we're all mobile.
Sorry?
We're mobile until this deal here either passes or fails. There's no need for us to secure any other property because we're in the middle of this process right here. Because the property we were trying to build in Livonia obviously did not go through, so that kind of basically threw us for a big loop.
So mobile, meaning you, you keep the trucks?
They're on the road basically 24 hours now, and I let two of the drivers take two of the trucks home.
Okay, so you're, and then when you tow something, you, you tow it where, too?
Either to a shop or to the owner's residence. If it needs to be stored overnight, we have the ability to store about 10 vehicles.
Is that what the intent of this building on, on Wayne Road is?
Yes.
You'd bring the equipment and keep your trucks there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagnon. Any other questions for our petitioner? No other questions from our commissioners? Mr. Long?
What would, what would be the average stay of a vehicle at this location?
I'd say two to three days at the most, probably more like 12 to 14 hours.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions? Mrs. Smiley?
If, if like the car was involved in an accident or something, and the police, don't you have to keep it for evidence for a while?
No, we don't do, we don't have police contract. That's something totally different. If a vehicle's picked up on the scene and there's any investigation, it wouldn't go to us, it will go to Livonia Towing, or whoever holds the contract for Livonia Police Department, which we're not interested in.
So you're not interested in bidding or doing anything with?
Not at all.
The police department?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McHugh?
Sorry, just to reiterate this, but, so your, your model that you have right now is basically going to continue? It's just that you'll have a location to park your trucks?
Correct.
You're not storing cars there?
No.
There's nothing else? You're not adding additional services or anything like that?
No, we're downsizing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions. Anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? We do have one person coming forward. Give them a chance to come forward and speak.
Good evening. My name is Chris Reeve. I operate a commercial flooring installation company at 12815 Wayne Road. We're right on the corner of Wayne and Glendale. So I'm not, not really opposed to this, but I do have a couple concerns, a couple questions, couple concerns. One, would this be a, just a temporary use exemption for the duration of their, their tenancy there, or would the rest of us in that zone also have the additional benefit of that, from a commercial property value standpoint?
Well, this is a waiver use that's, that's being sought to us, and the waiver use runs with the property.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Toramina?
That is correct, unless we stipulate that it's for this user only.
Okay.
Okay, and the other two concerns, I know that, that building does have a gated lot, so would all the tow vehicles and recovered vehicles be kept behind that gated lot?
That's something that we could, again, we could stipulate in our approval if we wanted to do that.
And then, main, a couple reasons for concern, we, our business, we have a gated privacy fence and a gated back lot, and we've already had three, two vehicles and a trailer stolen from back there, so I'm also a little bit concerned about the extra traffic, off-hours traffic, you know, whether there'd be extra, you know, maybe police patrol in that area, because it is kind of a blind corner, you know, and it, and it does dead-end. So it is kind of a little bit of a security concern for us as well.
Sure.
But definitely, like I said, not, not opposed to it if we can all just kind of, kind of work together with those concerns.
Sure, makes sense. I appreciate those comments.
That's about all I have.
All right, thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, for or against? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Mr. Fields, is there anything else that you wanted to add before we make our decision?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? If there's nothing else, I'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnon.
I make a denying resolution that the request to operate a vehicle tow yard at 12780 Wayne Road is hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the petitioner's failed, failed to affirmantly show that the proposed use complies with all the general waiver use standards and requirements as set forth in section 6.58 and 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended. Number two, that the operation of a vehicle tow yard with outdoor storage at this location and the pattern of traffic generated from proposed use would have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties. Number three, that the nature and intensity of the proposed use is inconsistent with the predominant small manufacturing businesses that are located within this industrial park. And four, the petitioner has failed to comply with the concerns deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the city and its residents.
Is there support for that?
Support.
That's Mrs. Smiley. So we have a motion to deny offered by Mr. Caremagnon, supported by Mrs. Smiley. Is there any discussion on the motion? There's no discussion. If the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Caremagnon votes aye. Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Votes aye.
Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye. Motion passes, that'll be a motion to deny. This is a waiver use, so this, this will go on the city council with a denying recommendation. Is that? Excuse me? Oh, it is, oh, it's going to be, excuse me, you're correct, thank you. So the petitioner would have 10 days in which to appeal this decision, in writing to city council, and then they can get that on their agenda if they wish. That finishes item number three, we will move on to item number four.
Petition 2022-03-02-11 submitted by Livonia Veterinary Hospital, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to sections 3.11 and 6.59 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended to expand the existent, existing veterinary hospital at 13889, 13391, and 13393, Farmington Road, located on the west side of Farmington Road between the CSX Railroad right-of-way and Schoolcraft Road in the northeast quarter of section 28.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and thankfully, we have Mr. Toramina keep me straight, so we'll go to you for our background on this.
This is veterinary clinic number two, and this is a request to expand an existing veterinary hospital, which is on the west side of Farmington, south of Schoolcraft Road. Bordering the site to the west and to the south is the city's DPW yard and administrative offices. This property, as you can see, is, has frontage on three public streets, Farmington Road to the east, Gretona Avenue to the north, and then Surrey Avenue to the west. The land area of the property is, it measures 145 feet by 240 feet, for a total area of eight tenths of an acre. So the existing veterinary clinic on the property is one-story in height, it's about So the existing veterinary clinic on the property is one-story in height, it's about twenty-two-hundred square feet, as you can see from this aerial photograph, it's located in the southeast corner of the property, uh, it's roughly thirty-two feet from the sidewalk along Farmington Road, uh, parking is mostly available on the north side of the building. Currently, there are two driveways that, uh, serve the site, one is on Farmington Road, the other is on, uh, Gretona Avenue, the rear portion of the site, uh, is undeveloped, uh, and it's this rear portion, uh, that is zoned M-one, uh, light manufacturing, and, uh, that's in the- currently in the process of being rezoned to C-two, it was back on September ninth of twenty-nineteen that City Council gave first reading to the rezoning, uh, with the final approval of the rezoning, uh, if this clinic is- is approved, uh, that would, uh, place the entire site, uh, under the C-one zoning, or C-two zoning classification, excuse me. So the proposal would, uh, extend, uh, or build the, or proposed addition would extend off of the northwest corner of the building, the addition would be one-story in height and measure roughly thirty-one-hundred-and-seventy square feet in size, so this would bring the total, uh, floor area of the- of the, uh, facility up to five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven square feet, uh, the expansion would provide additional exam rooms, as well as a pharmacy, a food store, as well as an employee lounge, uh, the main customer entrance would be moved to the front of the addition where there would be a new vestibule, uh, built, and just inside this vestibule, uh, there would be a reception area and client, uh, waiting room, and, uh, this is the floor plan that was presented with the, uh, the application, shows you all the different rooms, uh, within the, uh, both the existing as well as the, uh, proposed addition. Uh, the proposal meets all the minimum required, uh, building setbacks, um, in terms of parking, uh, again, it's based on a ratio of one, uh, space for every two-hundred square feet, that translates to twenty-one required parking spaces, this plan provides twenty-two parking spaces, six which would be, uh, in the front yard and sixteen in the rear yard, uh, the larger parking lot at the, uh, back of the site, that would be accessible via a driveway that would now come off of Surrey, uh, and the existing drive approach from Gretona would be removed, so the driveway alongside, uh, Gretona gets removed, a new driveway coming out of, uh, Surrey, uh, would be added, and that's where the majority of customer parking would be provided. Uh, the site plan does show an enclosed dumpster, we just discussed this, uh, its location, uh, during the study meeting, it would be directly behind, uh, the building that's, uh, adjacent to the entrance that would be used primarily for, uh, employees, uh, it would be screened using eight-foot-high, um, or- or, uh, walls that would match the brick on the, uh, building, um, landscaping, uh, the only issue that came up is we noted that there were a couple of, uh, sh- uh, trees, uh, shy of meeting the frontage requirements on Farmington Road, and a petitioner indicated, uh, their willingness, uh, to plant those additional trees, and that is provided in the, uh, in the proposed resolution. In terms of building materials, uh, the- really the intent is to- to have a uniform appearance, uh, the addition would consist of, uh, brick, uh, that would match the existing building, some stone accents, uh, would be provided along the base of the building, that would be carried over actually to the, uh, existing, uh, building. Phase one, as a petitioner indicated, that the study session, uh, would have the, um, the existing building, the flat roof would be maintained, and once they're, uh, completed with the construction of the addition, they would then move over to the existing building and- and add a peaked roof, something that would, um, be, uh, uh, uniform with the, uh, roof that is proposed with the addition. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have letters from various departments, including engineering, uh, dated May ninth, that reads, "We have no objections to the proposed petition, although the following items should be noted, uh, the proposed project will need to meet the requirements of the current Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, the submitted drawings do indicate that storm sewer and detention are proposed, but no details on the utilities have been given at this time, the owner will need to coordinate removal of the existing overhead utilities for the proposed building addition, the owner will need to submit full engineering plans to this department for permitting, should the project move forward and may be required to obtain permits from Wayne County should any work within the Farmington Road right-of-way. Uh, the owner will need to combine the parcels to create a single parcel, please coordinate the parcel combination with the assessment, uh, assessing office should the project be approved." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, uh, letter of no objection coming from the, uh, Livonia Fire and Rescue dated May tenth and signed by Brian Kucla, Fire Marshal for the city, a letter of no objection from the, uh, Division of Police, Public Safety, signed by Scott Shapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau, as stated May ninth, uh, a letter from our Inspection Department indicating that the parking spaces shall be ten feet by twenty feet and double striped, and that adequate soundproofing shall be installed to the extent necessary to ensure the elimination of all noise from the area used for the treatment and temporary keeping of such six- sick and diseased household pets. That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection, a letter of no objection from, uh, Department of Finance, signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant, dated April eighth, a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer, dated April fifth and signed by Linda Sheal, and then lastly, uh, a letter from the Assessment Department uh, indicating that the, uh, uh, the parcels, uh, in this, uh, on this petition should be, uh, combined when completed, and that letter's, uh, dated April seventh and signed by Kathy Siddle, that Residential Appraiser for the city, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Toramina, any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions, is our petitioner in the audience? Good evening, Sarah, I'll ask, you start with your name and address.
Uh, Dean Devance with Devance Custom Instruction at four-three-five-zero Utica Road, Sterling Heights.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you, and, uh, is there anything else that you would like to add to this, uh, presentation this evening?
No, the rezoning's already been addressed in the ZBA that we did quite a while ago, uh, presuming the approval, that will actually all kind of fall automatic.
Okay, and is there any questions from any of our commissioners for, uh, our petitioners, representative?
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carey Magno.
You're the- you're the construction manager, you said?
Yes.
So I wanna, I don't know what you know about the business, but I'm assuming the business is going, uh, going pretty well with quite an, uh, quite an expansion, do you?
Oh, her business?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you meant my business, sorry.
Well, hopefully yours too.
Ours is doing well, thank you, uh, hers is doing good, she's just looking, the older, existing building is older and is in need of renovation, she wants to expand, have the new one, and then, once that's done, then she can decide what she's doing with the old section.
Yeah, this is a stark contrast from what you heard earlier with the, uh, with the veterinary clinic before you, who's going to start out very small, this is, uh, this is quite large, but, uh, I guess if business demands, our business demands, good for, uh, good for you and good for the, uh, good for the clinic.
Uh, from what I think I told you guys before, her anticipation is with her other clinics to downsize and then hope, she's kinda, I'm guessing, hoping she can pull one of the vets from there, so then there would be her and another, that's why the amount of parking is- is adequate for what the space requires.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey Magno, any other questions for our petitioner, representative? Uh, Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman, uh, on the material we were given on this petition, it showed that the existing building, when the construction was complete on the new structure, the existing building would be re- refurbished-
Correct.
With same exterior materials as in the new building.
The lower portion of the exterior will actually be done during the construct- during the addition, it's the roof portion, we don't want to work over the existing building, that's-
So I- I thought I heard you say, when you made your presentation, that there would be a decision made about what to do with the existing building once the new construction was completed.
Correct, she's, whether it becomes another exam room or another-
So you're not saying that she'd demolish it?
No, 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 not at all.
That reference to the use.
Just the size, the, the existing building, if you, I don't know if any of you guys have pets or been in there, the rooms are kind of small, so in the newer building, they're much larger, so she just has to reconfigure the layout.
Right, you've answered my question, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Ventura, any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
Mr. Bonjero?
Uh, what are you planning on certain construction if everything goes through and get your approvals and?
I really want to shovel in the ground this year.
Still thinking this year?
Yes. We're trying, everything's hopefully pending you guys and ready to go.
Sounds optimistic.
Trying.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Bonjero, any other questions? No other questions, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this? I don't see anybody else. Uh, Mr. Devance, anything else that you'd like to add before we make our decision?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McQ?
Like to offer an approving resolution that this request to expand the existing veterinary hospital at one-three-three-eight-nine, one-three-three-nine-one, and one-three-three-nine-three Farmington Road shall be approved subject to the following condition, that the site plan identified as sheet number C-dash-two dated October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, prepared by GLA surveyors and engineers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. All parking spaces, except the required barrier-free parking, shall be double striped at- at ten feet, wide by twenty feet in length as required, and the number and location of the barrier-free parking spaces shall be provided at the direction of the Inspection Department, that the landscape planting plan identified as LP-one dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, prepared by Nancy Devlin Land Design, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, that two additional full-size deciduous trees equal in characteristics to those listed in Article X of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance as amended shall be installed in the front part of the site adjacent to the Farmington Road right-of-way, that all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights-of-way, shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition, that the building elevations plan identified as sheet number A-one-oh-two is received on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of the same brick used in the construction of the building, or in the event, or in event that a poured wall is substituted, the walls' design, texture, and color shall match that of the building, the enclosure gate shall be of solid steel panel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, the trash dumpster area shall be maintained and, when not in use, closed at all times, that all animal remains, medical and animal waste shall be properly disposed of, disposed of, that all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways, that a duly qualified attendant or veterinarian be available on the premises at any time there is an overnight boarding of pets, that adequate soundproofing shall be installed to the extent necessary to ensure elimination of all noise from the building, that the use of the open or outdoor runways, kennels, or pens are prohibited, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be se- separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning Board of Appeals, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for, and pursuant to section thirteen-point-thirteen of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of the approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
By Mr. Bonjero, is there a discussion on the motion? The motion to approve by, uh, Mrs. McQ, supported by Mr. Bonjero, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Carey Magno votes aye, Chairman Walsher?
Votes aye, motion passes, we'll go to City Council on the approving recommendation. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Now we move on to item number five on our agenda.
Petition two-zero-two-two dash zero-four dash zero-two dash one-two submitted by Area Towing and Recovery, Inc., requesting waiver use approval pursuant to sections three-point-one-seven and six-point-five-eight of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance as amended to operate in a vehicle tow yard at one-two-seven-one-nine Inkster Road, located on the west side of Inkster Road between the CSX Railroad and Schoolcraft Road in the northeast quarter of section twenty-five.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Carey Magno, Mrs. Smiley?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be excused on this item.
All right, we'll note in our minutes that, uh, Mrs. Smiley is stepping away at eight forty-four PM, and, uh, we'll go to Mr. Toramina.
And this is a second, uh, item involving vehicle tow yard, uh, in this case, the property is on the west side of Inkster, it's between the CSX Railroad and Schoolcraft Road, this property measures two-point-six-five acres with two-hundred-and-seventy feet, uh, of width, uh, by a depth of six-hundred-and-thirty-five, uh, feet, as you can see from the zoning map, uh, the zoning of the property is M-two, uh, general manufacturing, and the site is surrounded by other industrial-zoned, uh, parcels. Uh, the site of the actual tow yard is set back several hundred feet from Inkster Road, access is available across the, uh, adjacent property to the east, which is one-two-seven-zero-one Inkster Road, uh, the driveway, uh, that provides access to this site runs along the north side of that property, uh, and the main business there is O'Keller Tool Engineering Company, uh, there are no buildings located on the parcel that would contain the tow yard, instead, uh, the office of the tow ya- uh, of, or the office of the tow yard would be, uh, would operate out of a portion of a second building that is located on the O- O'Keller Tools site, and let me show you with that, actually back to the aerial photograph is probably the, uh, the best way to show this, this is the site in question, this is the roughly two, uh, point-six-five acres, uh, and this is a separately described parcel, uh, the building where the offices would be located is- is situated here on a separate parcel, and that driveway running to Inkster Road runs along the north side of that property all the way, uh, to the front part of the site, which is about seven-hundred feet, uh, seven-hundred feet away. Excuse me, um, O'Keller, uh, does occupy the main building, which is on the east half of the site, this is the building that's closer to Inkster Road, uh, the building at the rear, that would house the tow company is one-story and about eight-thousand square feet in total area, uh, area towing would occupy roughly half of the building, the westerly unit, which is closest to the property where the tow yard would be, uh, the interior, uh, layout is shown on the, uh, on the submittal, it includes a, a combination of offices, restroom, as well as a storage bay and warehouse, uh, between the building and the tow yard, there is a small parking lot, this is, this area is paved with about six, uh, with the capacity to handle about sixteen, uh, parking spaces, and so that would be the area used for employees and customers. The tow yard, uh, tow storage yard itself is surfaced with gravel, uh, it is completely enclosed with a six-foot-high cyclone fence, that is something that the ordinance requires, uh, the yard's access gate is located across from the northwest corner of the proposed office building, uh, parking, as I indicated, uh, is, would be within the paved lot, which is directly behind that building, the tow storage yard, uh, would have the capa- capacity to accommodate roughly three-hundred-and-forty-three, uh, recovered, uh, vehicles as well as tow trucks, uh, the site plan, uh, does show a trash enclosure that's located behind the building, uh, there would be a, a proper wall surrounding that, uh, dumpster that would be constructed out of brick, uh, landscaping, uh, minimal landscaping shown in this site, and site lighting apparently, uh, would consist of three pole-mounted light fixtures, which are, are measured fourteen feet in height and are located across the, uh, the front of the tow yard, um, I- I don't know, you know, the plan is- is a little bit, uh, doesn't provide much detail relative to lighting, so that is something that, um, I think the planning commission should, uh, get additional information on, is how the, uh, the tow yard itself would be illuminated. Um, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have a letter from the Engineering Department indicating that the existing property is currently serviced by public water main, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, should the developer need to make any corrections to the utilities or do any work within Inkster Road right-of-way, they will need to submit drawings to the Engineering Department, that li- a letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, uh, next we have a letter of no objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated April eighteenth and signed by Brian Kucla, uh, Fire Marshal, a letter of no objection coming from, uh, Sergeant Scott Shapansky of the, uh, Division of, of the, um, excuse me, Traffic Bureau, dated April seventh, uh, a letter from the Inspection Department, there, uh, reads, "All parking areas regardless of size must be hard-surfaced, pavement type and thickness must be approved by the City Engineer prior to construction, taking into consideration soil- soil conditions and traffic loadings," a letter, uh, letter is dated May ninth, a letter of no objection coming from the, uh, Department of Finance, uh, dated April eighth and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant, another letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer, dated May, or April seventh and signed by Linda Sheil, and then lastly, we have a letter from the Department of Assessment dated April twentieth that reads, "Plans submitted by Area Towing and Recovery requesting waiver use approval to operate a vehicle tow yard at one-two-seven-one-nine Inkster, this parcel is owned by one-two-seven-one-nine Inkster LLC and can only be accessed via easement from adjoining parcel owned by O'Keller Tool at one-two-seven-zero-one Inkster Road, in my first response, I included a copy of the survey showing the easement, however, based on the petition, it appears that part of the plan is for Area Towing and Recovery to use a building that is located on the adj- adjoining parcel, is there- Is there intent to lease the building from O'Keller Tool? Will they be leasing the building? Perhaps the building should be split from 12701 Inkster and combined with 12719 Inkster." That letter is signed by Kathy Sitterlit, residential appraiser for the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. Introduce yourself, and we'll see if we have some questions for you.
My name is Shane Anders. I live at 9 Glen Eagle, Dearborn. My business address, one of them is 16550 Racco Road in the city of Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Anders. Any other information you'd like to provide based on the presentation you've heard so far?
You know, other than the fact we spoke about the other night, it's obvious that this property follows the spirit of Livonia 21. The property to the north stores RVs, cars, and boats, and the property to the south stores vehicles. It's really a perfect location. It's out of sight, out of mind. All my other impound facilities are on main thoroughfares, and that can always be a challenge. I was very fortunate to strike a deal with O'Keller, who owns all the property, who is in control of that easement, and who, less than five years ago, used it as an RV storage facility, and no longer does.
Okay. All right. Let's see if we have some questions from our commissioners and any other information we can get that way. Any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Long.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. That access road, we're confident that that's going to hold up with the traffic that you've, that you're going to be coming in and out of there with, the trucks and what you're towing and everything else?
Well, I have spoke to O'Keller about that, and at some point in time, they're going to replace that, and I will have to pay a percentage of that. But he's been very open-minded, unlike most. I'm quite shocked, but very, very flexible, has been very, very accommodating, and would love to see something there instead of vacant property in the back portion of his facility.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, what, what, you're obviously, you know, got a much larger lot than the other one we considered earlier today. What's going to be the average stay, do you think, for vehicles?
So, when you, the, the reason for this facility is strictly to bid on the Livonia police towing contract. My primary and only business, really, from a towing perspective, is strictly law enforcement towing. I don't do road service. I don't tow vehicles for insurance companies. These are strictly police impounds. And on average, most of your vehicles stay, you know, somewhere between one to four days. If they stay longer than 10 days, these are the vehicles that we get stuck with, the abandoned vehicles out of the apartment complexes, or, you know, somebody was driving down the road in a $500 beater, and it went out on them. They grabbed the license plate and left it on the side of the road. It's part of the business, and those vehicles, we have to go through a process with the law that allows us, through the police department, to get rid of those vehicles.
Okay. My last question is, you know, obviously, we, we considered a different tow yard earlier. Obviously, this is a different use. Like you said, you, you're looking for the police contract. Is there anything else that you want to point out about your business that may differ from the standard towing businesses?
Yeah, so my business is quite different. I, I am heavily involved in technology with the five impound facilities that I own. I tow for 15 different police agencies, and that's all that I do. One thing that I'm very unique on is I also own an environmental company, and all of the absorbent that we use on scene that we reclaim, we don't leave it out there. It all gets tested. We have to complete a special waste profile before we can deliver it to the landfill. We have to test it, and then after that, we do receive a manifest and proof of how we dispose of our absorbent. Most impound facilities throw it in the trash, probably 99%. This is a very expensive process to go through. You're not guaranteed payment. It's not part of the contract. All of my facilities I own, so I have what they call hazmat pools and different types of pads and filtration systems that we use. A lot of these vehicles will come into our facility and will still be leaking some fluids from the accident. In all of our facilities, we have a cement area where those vehicles go, and then there's a hazmat pad that will collect any of the existing fluids that are being released before that we move it into what I would call pulverized asphalt hard-surface facility. The reason for that is vehicles that come in that are damaged, that are missing tires, that are, when you unload those vehicles, they will tear up your brand-new asphalt, and it will become pulverized asphalt in a very short period of time. The cemented area works better when we first have to contain those vehicle operating fluids. The problem with the cemented area is when you unload those vehicles, quite often, they do chip your cement, and over time, you're replacing it. So, the nice thing about the hard-surface pulverized asphalt is every year, you have an opportunity to grade it, and you're able to rake through and pick up any of the loose parts that come off of these accident vehicles. And so, we're, I'm really involved in that, and I think that, you know, over time, a lot of communities are going to get stuck with these impound facilities, and they're going to become brownfield sites, because they're all going to be contaminated, and if you don't take care of those vehicle operating fluids, they end up in your stormwater system and then into our lakes and rivers. So, I would think that's probably, besides the technology side of things, I would say the environmental is, makes me very, very unique, and in no way, shape, or form do I want to contaminate property that I'm on. At the end of the day, I would obviously be liable for that, so we take that very, very seriously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Karen Magno?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Ventura.
At our study session, I asked you the question whether or not you were going to get a BEA on the land so that you know it's not contaminated when you get it, and you said you were going to look into it. Have you come to a decision in that regard?
I definitely would do that, because this is leased property. Obviously, I would get that if I owned the property prior to purchasing it. Ultimately, I would like to purchase it. I do like to invest in my facilities. I own all of them. This would be the first one, and I would be spending quite a bit of money on a property that I don't own. But yeah, I definitely would get a baseline and have that documented so that I would at least limit my liability, knowing the condition of that property, being that, for many, many years, they were storing boats, RVs, and, and cars way before I was around.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions? Mr. Karen Magno?
Good evening. I've got a couple of questions. The lease, you just answered that. Where is your concrete area you plan to put cars on to let the fluids run out that are going to run out? Where is that on this property?
So, right now, those 16 spots, typically, in a police impound lot, you, you don't have a ton of traffic. Most of the vehicles are, you know, insurance companies are calling, and we're loading the vehicles up and delivering them. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, first of all, I have a lot of hoops. This is just the first of many. I still have to win the bid, which is a long ways away. So, this is just the first step. So, I would propose, and I would be willing, if you didn't feel as though that wasn't enough of a cemented area, I wouldn't have a problem expanding off of those 16 parking spots. There's another area that we could use for a holding area.
So, so the answer is the 16 spot, that is your area to drop a car or vehicle?
Yeah.
And, and contain whatever it's leaking?
Absolutely. I, I may have one or two employees there at a time, basically releasing vehicles, and we don't allow anybody to enter the property without being escorted, because of evidence and things like that, that you're storing. So, anybody that goes onto that property, there would have to be two people there, one that would handle the releasing, and the other one that would take them out to retrieve property from an accident vehicle or whatever it may be.
Okay, so you have a secured gate. Nobody gets in without your, your authorization or someone's authorization?
Every one of my facilities will have power gates. We have CCTV. I have a central dispatch center that takes all of the phone calls from all the police agencies, and all five impound facilities have cameras that come back to that facility, and there, it's manned 24/7 by a human being. We don't forward phones. We have somebody actually there who picks up the phone and keeps an eye on all of the properties and the security cameras, along with, we use quite a bit of lighting. When you're using cameras, lighting does help.
Well, you, you're talking right into my next question. So, something, an operation like this requires how many trucks and how many employees?
So, I currently have 30 employees. I have five impound lots. This location, my model between being able to provide service to all the police departments based on emergency response is I send the assets based on my locations, where it's needed most. Sometimes, for example, my location in Monroe, I-75 may freeze up, but my location in Taylor, which is really odd, does not. We will shift those assets that way. So, at any given-
Typically, typically, how many people-
You know, you're, you're going to have a minimum of three to four tow trucks that will be in and out of there. Typically, we have one there in case you have to move a vehicle out. So, you know, you're talking three to four drivers. My heavy-duty drivers are all over the place. We have rotators that are large cranes, and so I have two of those. Those run about $800,000, and those go based on the big wrecks, typically on the freeway.
For, for this site, you're talking about three or four trucks, maybe a half dozen people here?
Yeah, I wouldn't think that I would have, at any given moment, a half dozen. Yeah, I would say that's probably reasonable, but I, it really varies based on the weather and-
I got that.
-that kind of stuff.
Pete asked about the gravel, checking it beforehand. Obviously, the gravel is a concern with me. I get that you're throwing absorbent down, and you throw absorbent on a gravel lot. I, I don't know what, what you're really coming back with out of there. You mentioned your five tow yards and your 15 police contracts. Where are your five tow yards at?
So, in the city of Taylor, I have one large facility that's about four acres that stores about 400, 500 vehicles. I tow for the city of Taylor. They have one vendor who does all that. I tow about 5,000 cars a year for them. I do the state police. I do all of I-94 from Inkster Road all the way back to the city of Detroit, which is at I-94 in Wyoming, in Monroe. I have four lots down there. Those lots are strategically located throughout the county. I cover US-23 for Monroe County, along with the different police agencies and the state police. I provide service for the state police along I-75 from the state border all the way up to the Wayne County border. And then also in Wayne County, I cover for the state police, 75 from Southfield to Schaefer Road, which is the border of Detroit again. And just to clarify, we don't use absorbent in our facility. We actually use pools that collect it, or we use absorbent pads. And so, those pads, you lay down, or in the cemented area, we have a structure where the cemented pad is covered by a hazmat mat that you remove over time. It collects the absorbent, all the vehicle operating fluid, and then you dispose of it and you replace it.
I guess the last question I've got, so you've got a yard in Taylor that holds 400 to 500 vehicles?
Correct.
I, I can't do the math real quick in my head here, but, man, you've got to be sure that vehicles in and out of there very quickly to move them in and out of the yard every four or five days. It's got to be just a, a, a non-stop shuttle of vehicles?
It's, it's quite an operation. I do run an auction every single month. I auction off about 100 and some vehicles a month currently. I'm the only tower. I actually do it online, and then I am now just rolling out with not only the online auction, but what, after having the online, I am now implementing a live auction at the same time. So, we auction off a minimum of 100, 100 cars right now a month out of that Taylor location.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Toramina?
Would that same operation occur here? Would, would it be your intention to have a Class W license?
When, when I've done some information with the police numbers, the city of Livonia Police Department, on average, tow's about 75% of what the city of Taylor Police Department does. I FOIA'd their impound cards and went through and figured out the numbers of how many abandoned vehicles, how many impounds, and how many arrests. And Livonia is quite larger than the city of Taylor. I was quite shocked, but it's, it's about 75%, and I'm guessing, you know, 2,000. That 5,000 number includes MSP, which I would then compete for the 96 area for MSP also.
So, to, to answer his question, he's asking, are you, are you looking to get a Class W to, to conduct auctions at this site?
I'm required by law, if you're the police tower. The law is very clear that the law enforcement agency, who is the individual or the department that requests the vehicle to be towed, by law, I work with every police agency to run that auction. They have to provide the paperwork, and there are guidelines that we must advertise, which currently, your current tower has done that for the last 30 years. It would be no different than what they do. It just would be a little different, and being online, it brings a lot more bidders.
It must be a different, a separate process from, from, for police toes, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. It's very clear in the law under 257, 252G. I'm sure you're not going to look at it, but it outlines exactly what law enforcement is supposed to do and what the custodian is required to do in working with law enforcement to get rid of those vehicles. And your police department has been doing that forever.
Sure. Okay. All right. Any other questions from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
It just seems to be disconnected, the cars staying four or five days, and then the auction and that big, big number, four or 500 cars a year, just seems to be a disconnect in how long the vehicles sit there to me.
So, the law requires this. When the police department has a vehicle towed-
Yeah.
-if it's towed for an impound, the law states that the police department must wait seven days to deem the vehicle abandoned. If the person comes and gets the vehicle before it's deemed abandoned, then they take it out of the system. If it exceeds seven days, the law states you must wait seven, but no more than 30 days, you have to deem the vehicle abandoned. Then what happens is, the registered owner gets a notice in the mail from the Secretary of State, and they're given 20 days from the date of that notice to deem that vehicle or to petition the court that the police department improperly towed the vehicle or that our fees were unreasonable. You have to go through that process, and then once you do that, you then have to schedule an auction, and the law requires you that you must advertise five days prior to auctioning that vehicle off. So, you have to wait, if they petition, you have to wait till you go through the- So you have to wait, if they petition, you have to wait till you go through the entire process, uh, before you can auction that vehicle off.
Okay, so, so, I, I'm trying to get this in my head. So essentially, these cars don't sit there four or five days. They sit there for two or three months before the, a lot of them sit there for months before they're moved off this property.
What, what I stated-
Would that be true?
Yeah, what I stated earlier was typically a vehicle that somebody wants to come get typically gets it in the first one to seven days. If they, if they don't come within that period of time, more than likely, they end up through that lengthy process.
Yeah.
And that is the current process that the police department has implemented for the last fifty years already here in Livonia. It doesn't change based on where the lot is.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I had, I think Mark mentioned lighting, the, yeah, insufficient lighting at the, at the property. What would be, I, I, I imagine, let me say this, I imagine you're not gonna do anything if you don't get the police impound job. So what would be your plan if you were to be awarded the police impound job? And what would you do with lighting there?
Um, well, there's two things. For lighting, um, I don't use telephone poles. Most people will just go, uh, take a, a telephone pole with wood and put it in. Um, I run all the electrical underground. Um, I have light poles no different than your target parking lot. And, uh, the reason for that is I also include my CCTV wiring through that so that we can monitor the entire facility. Because at the end of the day, if any property is missing out of those vehicles that are being impounded, um, I'm, we're financially liable for that. And so that allows us, uh, to monitor what's going on.
So there would be a substantial, um-
Investment.
Amount of work here-
Yeah.
-in, in the, in the event. And, uh, and I guess at the end of the day, in my opinion, we're, we're, we're authorizing a, uh, or possibly authorizing a, 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 a tow yard slash junkyard in my, I got that in my head, but let's, let's see where we're at. Thank you.
I would completely agree with you that, and that's why this location is, is a perfect location, is because it's out of sight and out of mind. You can't see it from the roadway and it's not something where someone is going to realize that it's even back there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagnow. Any other questions? Mr. Bongiello?
Just one quick question. Um, if you, okay, so you're bidding on this. When are the bids starting, do you know?
So I think we have, uh, another two weeks before we submit the bid.
Okay.
Um, this is, this is part of the bid process. This is kind of unique. Um, historically, Livonia has never allowed for competition. It's been very, very difficult. Um, they have, uh, decided to take a very transparent process and have opened it up and tried to create some competition. Um, it's still very, very difficult. We normally do not go through these types of hoops and hire, uh, a firm to provide planning, uh, plans and, you know, drawings and things like that. Uh, it's-
So if you, okay, let's just say you win the bid. You, how, how much time do you have to get this yard purchased and closed or leased, right? And then get it fit to store? You gotta be moving cars-
So-
-pretty fast or-
So I already have a lease, right? Contention on that. So, uh, we've already agreed as, as far as that goes. It's just a matter of winning the bid. Um, when I took over the city of Taylor twenty-five years ago, um, I won the bid, uh, I opened up the facility and we did a transition with that current vendor. And either they would keep the cars and they would release the remaining and auction off whatever's left over, or they would, I would bring the cars to our facility, especially if there is, um, evidence that has to be held. So it's a process, um-
So what's the turnaround time from the war to the bid to you're moving cars?
Well, that-
Do you have any idea?
I don't have control over that. That would be up to the city-
Whatever.
And the police department would work through that process, yeah.
Cause you've got some work to do to get that yard fit to store.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's gonna take a little bit. I think that's a little kind of trying to get it figured, cause this is kind of like all hypothetical.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it, it's a unique, like I said, it's a very unique situation. Typically, if you don't own property, you know, and, and a lot of people complain about that, that you never give an opportunity. You're not being transparent, you're not trying to create a competitive process. And Livonia is trying to be different. Uh, I will say that much. It's, uh, it's interesting. They're trying, it's very difficult to do, and I don't think they're, I don't think you've approved one, uh, yet. I don't think anybody's made it through the entire process and was able to strike a lease agreement and get everything done. I, I've been fortunate enough, it has not been easy.
I do agree, though, this site is, of all of them, has been pretty well, it's fit for something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bongiello. Any other questions? No other questions? Uh, I don't have any other questions for you either. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anybody coming forward. Uh, so, Mr. Andrews, is there anything else that you wanted to say before we close and make our decision?
I can talk forever, so I'll, I'll leave it.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Yeah, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to operate a vehicle tow yard at twelve seven one nine Inkster Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as sheet CE1 dated April sixth, two thousand twenty-two as revised, prepared by Hennessy Engineers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the easement right-of-way leading back to the tow yard shall be repaired to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Number three, that the parking lot for employees and customers directly behind the building shall be repaired, resealed and restripped as necessary to the satisfaction of the inspection department. Parking spaces shall be doubled, double striped at ten feet wide by twenty feet in length. Number four, that the maximum number of vehicles parked in the tow yard at any given time shall not exceed three hundred and forty-three vehicles. Number five, that a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence shall replace the existing chain-link fence along the east side front of the outdoor storage yard to help shield the vehicles and activities from the adjacent properties. Number six, that the vehicle tow yard shall be resurfaced with a material approved by the engineering division prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and shall be properly graded and drained to dispose of all surface water and maintained in a dust-proof condition, provided further that the engineering division shall inspect the condition of the vehicle tow yard within two years with direction on any needed repairs or improvements. Number seven, that the landscaping shown on the approved site plan shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department. Number eight, that any pole-mounted light fixture shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number nine, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting, solid panel fiberglass. Number ten, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number eleven, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number twelve, pursuant to section thirteen dot thirteen of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
Yeah, support by Mr. Ventura to, uh, for an approving resolution, uh, made, made by Mr. Long. Uh, Mr. Toramina, is there any need to beef up item number eight in regards to the, the light fixtures that, that additional light fixtures should be installed on this site? Or is that fine the way it is?
I believe all of that language is contained in the bid specifications.
Oh, okay, with, for the, the contract itself?
That's correct.
That would make sense. Okay, very good. All right, any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll on a motion to approve.
Uh, Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Bongiello.
Aye.
Caremagnow votes no. Chairman Wilshaw.
Votes aye, motion passes and we'll go to city council on the approving recommendation. Good luck. And, uh, now we move on to item number six on our agenda.
Number six is petition two zero two two dash zero four dash zero two dash one three, submitted by Wade Shows, requesting waiver use approvals, approval pursuant to sections three point one one and six point five six of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance as amended to conduct a carnival in the parking lot of the former Sears, sponsored by Livonia AM Rotary Club, consisting of amusement rides, games and food concessions from July fourteenth twenty-two through July twenty-fourth twenty-two on the property at two nine five zero zero Seven Mile Road, located on the northeast, northwest corner of Seven Mile Road and Middle Belt Road in the southeast quarter of section two.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We'll note that, uh, Ms. Smiley has rejoined us at nine twenty PM. Welcome back. And Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This year's, uh, carnival at, uh, the, uh, former Livonia Sears, uh, property at the northwest corner of Seven Mile, Middle Belt Roads would, uh, would be conducted for a duration of eleven days. This is, would run from July fourteenth through, uh, July twenty-fourth. And, uh, the hours are consistent, everything is consistent with previous, uh, approvals involving the carnival at this location, uh, Monday through Friday, four to eleven PM, and then on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, from twelve to eleven, uh, July twenty-fifth is when the carnival would be, uh, closed out. Um, we have several items of correspondence. I'll go through these quickly. Uh, first letters from the engineering division, April twenty-second is the date. It reads, "Should the carnival have the need to occupy or should any of the associated activities impact either of the Seven Mile Road or Middle Belt Road right-of-way, a permit from Wayne County will be required as both roads are under their jurisdiction. All sanitary sewage from the site, recreational vehicles or campers shall be disposed of properly. And should any operators need to have water provided to, for their facilities, they should contact the city of Livonia Water Department to obtain the proper equipment, including the water meter and backflow preventer." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. A letter from the fire and rescue division that indicates, "As with past practice, please maintain proper ingress and egress points for rescue personnel in case of emergency." That letter is signed by, uh, Brian Cookla, uh, Fire Marshal and Senior Fire Inspector. Uh, next is a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police, signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Uh, from the inspection department, a letter dated, uh, May ninth that reads, "Permits and inspections will be required for this proposed carnival. A pre-event meeting will be required with the deep, the director of inspection, fire marshal and the public emergency manager prior to filing the required permits." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, uh, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter from the Department of Finan, Finance, indicating that there are unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant for the city. And lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer, dated April twenty-sixth and signed by Linda Sheal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Bongiello?
Just for Mark on that unpaid water, is that from Sears or?
That's from the current owners, so that's, uh, that's something that we'd probably have to take up separately from them.
Okay, it's not this petition, all right, okay. Thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you. Any, uh, any other questions for our planning staff? If not, uh, our petitioners are in the audience, feel free to come forward. Good evening, Ms. Hardesty.
Good evening, thank you. Good to be here.
Good to see you.
Good to be here, good to see you. And, uh, Pat Zukel-
Hey, Zukel, Livonia AM Rotary Club.
Excellent, thank you. And, uh, anything that you would like to add from, uh, what's already been presented?
No, same, same as we've done in many years past, so, no changes.
Excellent. Any questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? Mr. Long?
Could you, um, detail the, uh, the inspection of the rides that, that occurs every year with this?
Yes, yes. Um, the state inspectors, um, we petition the state, apply with the state of Michigan for permits and the inspections are done once the rides are here onsite in Michigan. Um, Hamburg is the first place that they'll be this year, uh, prior to Livonia spree and then at that, it's at those two events where the, uh, state inspectors will conduct them. They're done. We also have a third-party, um, inspection done and then, of course, our own staff does the inspections at every site, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ventura? Excuse me. Uh, at our study session, there was some discussion about, um, the site being available. It was being considered by another user and I'm assuming that your presence here this evening indicates that you have a firm lease for this site on these dates.
We, we do have a lease. We did receive notice that there was a potential interest in the property and they would be notifying us if in fact that went through. Um, we have not received notice of that, so we're proceeding as, with our lease. We have not been given notice that we cannot be there, so.
So do we understand that it's possible you will still get this notice?
It's a possibility, but I don't think it's likely. I don't think it's gonna happen.
All right. Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, excellent. Uh, any other questions for our petitioner? Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anybody coming forward. Uh, anything else, Ms. Hardesty, you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Uh, I don't think so. Thank you, thank you for working with us every year to do this. It's a, it's a tremendous fundraiser for the Livonia Rotary Club that gives back to the city of Livonia, so we're, we're pleased to be back.
Definitely, and, uh, we'll see what we can do to, uh, to move this along for you.
Thank you.
With that, uh, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and a motion will be in order.
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'll offer an approving resolution. I got this request to conduct a carnival sponsored by Livonia AM Rotary Club in the parking lot of the former Sears, Sears at twenty-nine five hundred Seven Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the carnival shall, shall be limited to the dates specified by Wade Shows, Inc., which are from July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two through July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, inclusive. And, planning staff, correct the typo there?
I'm sorry, could we have the wrong date?
Yeah, there's a typo with number one.
Twenty twenty-
Number two, that the proposed carnival operation shall be confined to the areas illustrated on the aerial layout plan submitted as received by the planning commission on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Number three, that all rides, food concessions, booze and other equipment and apparatus relating to the operation of the carnival shall be located at least sixty feet distant from Seven Mile Road and Middle Belt Road's right-of-way lines. Uh, number four, that, that the temporary housing and storage of other trucks and equipment associated with the carnival shall be parked or stored within the extreme southwestern portion of Sears parking lot, but no closer than sixty feet from the Seven Mile Road right-of-way line. Number five, that the hours of operation shall be limited to the following, Monday through Friday from four PM and to eleven PM and on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, from twelve PM to eleven PM. And, number six, that the issues outlined in the correspondence dated May ninth, twenty twenty-two from the fire marshal, including maintaining proper ingress egress points for rescue personnel and access to fire hydrants, shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue. Subject to the preceding conditions, this petition is approved for the following reasons. Number one, that the proposed use complies with all special and general waiver use standards and requirements set forth in section six point five six and thirteen point thirteen of Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance as amended. Two, the site has the capacity to accommodate the proposed use. Three, that the use of the subject property for carnival purposes will not interrupt the normal traffic flow and circulation in the area and will not impede access to the neighboring properties. And four, that no reporting city department objects to the proposed use.
Is there support?
Support.
I hear, uh, support from Mrs. McHugh. I think we can forgive that two-year typo, given that two years sort of disappeared for a lot of people in the last, last couple of years.
For sure.
All right, uh, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mrs. McHugh. If there's, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura? Aye. Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bongiello?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Caremagnow votes aye. Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye, motion passes.
Chairman Willschau?
Votes aye, motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving recommendation.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. That concludes the public hearing section of our agenda. We now move on to miscellaneous section of our agenda. These are items that we've talked about, uh, before, but we are going to revisit, uh, item number seven.
Petition two zero two two dash zero three dash zero eight dash zero one, submitted by MA Designers, requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.10 and 13.13 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance in connection with proposal to construct an addition and remodel the interior and exterior of the retail center at 34,800 Plymouth Road, located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Stark and Wayne Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 28.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina, Mr. Toramina, any updates on this item?
Uh, we did receive additional information, um, and I know we discussed this briefly at the study session. Uh, this is the updated rendering of the proposed, uh, retail, uh, center. Um, what it does is it shows how the exterior would be finished, uh, using a combination of brick and, and stone and aluminum, um, panels. Uh, the roofing material is standing seam metal that's going to be carried over, uh, not only on the portion of the existing roof that remains with the structure, but also the new roof. Uh, this project involves, uh, an addition to this retail center. It's on the right-hand side, uh, that's a two-story addition. Uh, on the left-hand side, a second story would be added to that, uh, that end unit. Uh, this increases the overall square footage of the building, uh, by about 6,900, uh, square feet, bringing it up to roughly 14,000 square feet, uh, where you have five, uh, retail tenants, potential retail tenants on the ground floor, two office tenants located on the upper level. Uh, this will have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals because the rear setback, um, is non-conforming. That setback is only roughly six feet, nine inches from the back wall. Uh, the ordinance requires a setback of 20 feet, so adding to the, uh, building is gonna necessitate, um, a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, in our parking analysis, we do show that, um, uh, the parking, uh, is slightly, uh, less than what the ordinance, uh, would stipulate. Um, however, when we look at the, the ITE standards, uh, we do note that, uh, it's much closer where the ordinance would require, um, a recommended, uh, 55 parking spaces. Uh, this site contains 53 parking spaces, so only a, uh, a slight deficiency there, uh, and that can be improved by City Council if, if they agree that the parking is, is adequate. Um, landscaping, uh, is also being provided significantly more than what is there today. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out the correspondence quickly?
Sure, please.
A letter from the Engineering Division, uh, that reads, uh, this is dated April 14th, uh, the existing property is currently serviced by public water main, storm sewer, and existing sanitorium sewer. Uh, the proposed plans should not impact, have an impact to the existing utilities. Uh, should the developer need to make changes to the utility service leads or do any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way, they will need to submit engineering drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required from either the City or the Michigan Department of Transportation. And again, that's from our Engineering Division. Uh, no objections coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue. That letter is dated April 18th. Letter, uh, also no objection from the Division of Police, uh, dated April 14th. Letter from the Inspection Department indicates that the parking lot shall be repaired and restripped as necessary. Parking spaces shall be 10 by 20. The gates on the dumpster enclosure shall be steel, uh, or maybe as approved, and then signage was not reviewed with the petition. All signage must, must comply with the ordinance. Uh, there is, um, unpaid water and sewer charges according to the Department of Finance. Uh, that amount is $371.64. Uh, the due date on that appears to have been back in February, so that, uh, so this is a delinquent charge that will have to be resolved, uh, prior to City Council. And then, uh, lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Mrs. Smiley?
Um, yes, I, thank you. I had a question about, we talked about the mechanical stuff there.
Yep.
What, what happened? Did I miss that? Where is it now?
We do not have details on where the mechanicals, uh, will be installed. They are on the roof currently. They are showing a, um, a screen, a decorative fence running along the back, uh, of this, uh, but whether or not the, the rooftop mechanicals would go back on the roof, we're not, we're not sure. Maybe the petitioner has new information that he can provide.
Okay.
I'll zoom in on that area to show you what, uh, what it looks like. You can see here, this, uh, 36-inch-high aluminum rail, uh, that presumably would conceal any rooftop mechanical equipment.
And the roof goes like this, not like?
No, you know, there's, uh, again, I'll show you how that-
That's very mechanical, isn't it?
Yeah, within the minutes.
Vigilate.
Well, it's, it's, it's a flat portion, and to show you what it, it is, uh, really the best way to do that is to go to the aerial photograph, 'cause it gives you the best, uh, understanding. So, this, if you look carefully, the peak portion of the roof is here, and this, the part that's gonna remain is roughly, um, uh, from here to here, right? And then this is a flat portion. So, if the mechanicals are gonna be re, uh, relocated, they're gonna be located somewhere here on the, on a part of the roof that actually flattens out, if that makes sense.
And not to me.
I don't, you know, there is a side view, uh, no, actually, the side view doesn't show that, but this part of the roof line is actually flat, and then it, then it comes up, then it slopes up. You can see that on the, it might be a little difficult to see, but-
Commissioner Bonjero, does that work for you?
I think they're gonna have to work it out, because when you're looking at the roof view the way it is now, on the left side, that whole roof is getting cut away, 'cause there's a second floor stacking over the top of that.
Correct.
So that's, rooftop view is not gonna stay. The other one, they might as well put it inside the other addition as well, and save all the headache of having to have somebody service those units, 'cause they need to be serviced at least twice a year, trying to get up on a roof in the middle of the winter, you know what I mean? They should just go inside, and then the noise for the neighbors too, and it just seems like it's just, that's gonna be worked out. I'm sure this is just, this is just a preliminary plan. I'm sure once they get the architectural done, they'll have that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll ask our petitioner about that, uh, in a moment. Any other questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Uh, Mark, maybe you don't know the answer to this, but, uh, on the elevation, it shows there appear to be offices on the second floor at the additions on the east and west end.
Correct.
Um, if those office spaces were to be leased to somebody other than the person that occupied the main floor, how do you handle barrier-free code? Is there an elevator required, or what happens?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know on, under what circumstances they can use those areas for office space. I know if, you're correct, if it's in connection with the ground floor unit, they can probably avoid the need for that, but, that's something, it was not noted with the Inspection Department, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions? If not, our petitioner is in the audience. Good evening, sir.
My name is Faraz Seryani. Uh, my address, 25734 On Arbor Trail, Dearwood Heights. Um, I'm not sure what I can add, but, uh, if you guys have any, I will try to answer.
All right, let's, uh, well, you heard a question already, uh, there was a little bit of discussion and some question about what's gonna happen to those rooftop mechanical-
Definitely, they're, they're, we're gonna move them. Uh, our, uh, our plan to install inside every unit, uh, heat, uh, heat unit inside, it's a lot easier on the maintenance, like you mentioned. Also, that's my plan from the beginning. I, I just don't want, uh, heat unit to be in the roof. It, it's just a matter of leak and stuff like that. It just, I wanna cut the maintenance on the building.
Okay, excellent, thanks for answering that question. Is there any other questions from any of our commissioners for this project?
Actually, that's for, um, Mr. Toramina, is, is that signage, um, approved or within range? I guess you really don't know how big the letters or what the signs, right? Is the signage approved as it is?
No, this, this, our, any action this evening, uh, would not address the issue of signage. That would have to be handled, uh, separately through permits from the Inspection Department. They're limited on size and placement, uh, so we presume that they'll meet the ordinance when it comes to, uh, all of those, uh, requirements.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other questions for anybody tonight? Made this poor gentleman sit for two and a half hours, we gotta make his money work.
There's one here, or we can get him out of here.
All right, uh-
It's worth it.
I don't see any other, uh, questions from the commissioners, is, and there's nobody left in the audience to, uh, ask anything, so, uh, if there's no other discussion, I think a motion can be made.
Mr. Chair, I'll make an approving resolution.
Smiley?
I'll make sure I'm on the right page here. That the request to construct an addition and remodel the interior and exterior of the retail center at 34800 Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval in the following conditions. The site plan identified as sheet number SP dash one dated January the 4th, 2022, prepared by MA Designs Group Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. All parking spaces except the required barrier-free parking shall be striped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length as required, and the number and location of the barrier-free parking spaces shall be provided at the direction of the Inspection Department. The bumper blocks or other type of barrier approved by the Inspection Department shall be installed in the parking spaces immediately in front of the building so that the vehicles do not encroach over the storefront's walkway. The landscape plan identified as sheet number SP dash two dated April the 5th, 2022, as revised, prepared by MA Designs Incorporated, is here, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the petitioner shall work with the staff in the Plymouth Road Development, PRDA, on plans to ins, to install additional landscaping and other streetscape improvements, for example, brick piers and fencing along the Plymouth Road. All disturbed lawn areas, including road right-of-way, shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. Underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, including the right-of-way, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department, and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. The exterior building elevation identified as sheet number A dash three dated May the 2nd, 2022, as revised, prepared by MA Designs Group Incorporated, is hereby, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed, it's not rooftop anymore, is that?
No, it's not gonna be.
So, uh-
Shall be eliminated.
Okay, the whole rooftop-
Like it.
-mechanical equipment shall be eliminated, uh, from the, okay, anyway. That all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded so as to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadways. That the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of the same brick used in the construction of the building, or in the event a poured wall is substituted, the walls' design, texture, and color shall match that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting, solid panel fiberglass. Only conforming signs are approved as part of this petition, and any additional signs shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. That unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising, such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, shall be prohibited. The specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for, and pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is there any discussion on the motion? There's no discussion? If the Secretary can call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Willschau?
Votes aye, motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving recommendation. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good night. Uh, Mr. Secretary, we have, uh, one item left. I think we're gonna have to break it into two pieces, though, because it's two different, uh, minutes.
Yep, I think so. The approval of the 1,185th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on March 22nd.
All right, and with that meeting, we have myself, uh, yourself, Mr. Karen Magno, and Mrs. McHugh are absent. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura, and supported by-
I'll support that.
-by Mr. Bonjero. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show, uh, five-
Four.
Excuse me, four, to approve that, with, uh, myself, Karen Magno, and McHugh abstaining. Makes sense?
Got it.
Got it, all right, excellent. Now let's move on to-
1,186, approval of the minutes of the regular and public hearing held on April 12th, 2022.
All right, and is there someone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Mr. Long, supported by-
Support.
-by Mrs. McHugh. That one had Mr. Bonjero and, uh, Mr. Ventura absent. So, we will, if there's no objection, we will, we will, uh, show five on that one, if I can, my math is correct on that? Thank you, I went to public school, you know. Uh, so, we'll show five to approve that, and, uh, with, uh, Mr. Bonjero and Ventura abstaining. So that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the Planning Commission? Please say no. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. Smiley. And, uh, again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show seven to adjourn this meeting tonight, which will be at, uh, 9:47 PM. That's a one-one for us. Uh, thank you to our, uh, city staff and Channel 8 staff, uh, excuse me, I should say, Livonia Television staff, for bringing this meeting to our community, and with no further business to come before us, we will adjourn this meeting at 9:47 PM. Thank you, and good night, Livonia.
Okay.